Hello? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Better? All right. Thank you.
Mr. Warren, do you mind repeating that motion, please?
Yes, the motion is to remove Item 7I from the consent agenda to allow Mr. Dotson to be here next month because he's out of town and wasn't able to be here. Item 13A to be added is the extension of the Horseshoe Road project to include Saddle Road. And Item 9A is to direct the community development staff, Mr. and Ms. Emily Ragsdale and Vaden Hunt, to work on revisions to code changes for RPD. And we will review those changes when we get to 9A.
That's right. Do we need to go back through the second? Are we good?
We're good with that.
Okay.
We can move on to approval of the agenda.
All right, thank you. Moving to Item 6. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Second by Mr. Ingram. Any discussion? If not, we're ready to vote. Motion carries. Approved. Moving to Item 7, Consent Agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ings. Thank y'all. Any discussion? Not, we're ready to vote. Passes. Moving to Item 8, Presentations. Board members, Ms. Ings, you have two?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You want to move to the front?
I must not head to my phone.
I thought I was loud talking.
I thought I was loud talking.
You got it.
Both of these young men also played football for Dan River. They're stars in my book. I'd like to present a certificate of excellence for both of these young men. Jakari Thomas, he just graduated this past year in attending AT&amp;T, North Carolina AT&amp;T, and Casey Ferguson, that's enrolled in DCC. The certificate of excellence says, "The Pittsavania County Board of Supervisors expresses sincere congratulations and admiration to you for your outstanding accomplishments, placing 12th out of 464 teams in the Strike King Bass Master High School National Championship. Winning the Hunter Owens Memorial Scholarship and winning a scholarship from Bass is remarkable. We commend you both for your hard work and dedication, and we wish you the best in your future endeavors." It's Jakari Thomas and Casey Ferguson. And I've asked Jakari if he would speak a couple of words for you, maybe Casey too.
Good evening, everybody. First, I'm giving honor to God without none of this, without all of this, nothing without him would be possible. I just want to thank the community and everybody, members of the board, for all of your unconditional love and support. The Ferguson's, my mom, the Thomas family, Dan River High School, without none of this would be started, you know? We started in high school. COVID hit. We had to change up a few things and keep the ball rolling, but I just want to thank everybody and continue to trust in God, for real. Nowadays, we need to trust in God more, you know? And a lot of things are happening, but no distraction keeps that away from us. Trust in God. Thank you. I'll talk a little bit. Mine's not going to be as good as his. But yeah, I like, thank you, Ms. Ings. This is crazy, like, never, but I thought this would be happening to somebody like me. I just want to thank everybody. I'm just like, oh, there's a lot of people staring at me. But yeah, thank y'all all for coming. This is amazing. I can't thank Ms. Ings and all of y'all enough for all of this. Just thank y'all so much.
And what you probably don't know, they had vote trouble on the last day of the tournament, and one of the member, a man in the community, offered his vote for them to finish out this tournament. That is what Dan River community does for each other, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. All right, Ms. Jessica Jones, would you come forward, please? That was the Dan River side. Now here's the Tunstall side. We had this prepared for you last month, and I forget where you told me you were at, but it's so good to have you tonight. This is a certificate of excellence. Jessica M. Jones, Tunstall High School, agricultural education teacher and FFA advisor, was awarded the National California Casualty Award for Teaching Excellence on May 5, 2023, during the National Education Association Foundation Salute to Excellence in Education Gala held at the Anthem in the District Wharf of Washington, DC. The NEA Foundation Awards for Teaching Excellence program recognizes educators from around the country who promote excellence in teaching and advocacy for the profession. In addition to being recognized for excellence in the classroom and instructional practice, Jones was nominated by her peers, her National Education Association State Affiliate, the Virginia Education Association, for her professional practice advocacy for the profession, commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice, family and community engagement, and leadership in professional development. The Pittsavania County Board of Supervisors expresses its deepest congratulations and admiration to Jessica Jones for this amazing accomplishment, and wish you all the very best in your future endeavors, given by William V. Ingram, Tunstall District Supervisor, and Darrell W. Dalton, Chairman. Thank you so much. Okay, your friends and associates, if you would come up, please. I'm not sure who you are. If you're here to support Jessica, please come down. Oh, okay. You don't want to come down? Okay. Okay. Anybody back here? Okay. You good? Okay. Would you like to say a word or two?
I don't know if I should. Okay, so giving honor and glory to God, who is the head of my life. Hi, babies. There's some of my students right there. See y'all raggedy sitting back there. Hey, hey, y'all. Without him in my life, none of this would be possible. And the fact that I have my children in this room, not my students, my children, and they just went, "Hey," and then come down here and get a picture. It's okay. If man had said, "Come get a picture," y'all would come on down here. Come on. Come on, youngins, come on. Now, some of these are former students as well. And I will tell you, it's been a privilege and an honor to teach and continue to teach, and this is my 20th year teaching. And I will say right now, being with these young folks keeps me young, but it makes me proud because this is the future of our community. So any and everything I can do to make sure that we get in and go in the right direction. See, look, see, look at him, look at him. It's a thing of beauty, and to share this with y'all, this is you, and I thank you for being a recognition of your family and your family, they know I'm going to cry. Thank you.
You guys want to say anything? No? You good? Okay. Board members? Okay. All right. Hey. Yes, sir. Yeah. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming. Thank you. Jessica, thank you.
We are along with a lot of things going on tonight. Assistant County Administrator Dave Arnold, and I'm pleased to recognize the third year in a row where we've had a summer, a successful summer internship program. We had a total of 17 participants across multiple county offices. If we have any of those 17 participants in attendance tonight, we do have a certificate, but I believe our deputy clerk has informed me we don't have it. So we're going to forego the naming, but I would like to introduce this lady. Certainly, you're involved with coordinating the program on the other side of things beyond the county, I believe.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. My name is Kiana Dillard. I'm the Work-Based Learning Coordinator at the Institute for Advanced Learning and Research, and we did host 17 interns for the Summer 2023 cohort. And I just wanted to thank everybody for being a wonderful community. I'm actually from Martinsville, Virginia, so I'm not too familiar with this community, but I appreciate being a part of this, and I know the interns are very well pleased with their experience with you all. So thank you so much.
I believe it is College Move-In Week, so that may have something to do with the low turnout or no turnout of these interns. But again, they really helped out county staff in providing meaningful work during the course of the summer, and we wish them all the best moving forward, and we hope to continue this program in years to come. Thank you all.
No, you do now. You do hearing of citizens. Here we go. I'm a 9A. Got you. Moving to Item 9, Hearing of the Citizens. Each person addressing the board under Hearing of the Citizens should be a resident or landowner of the county or the registered agent of such residence or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name and district in order of tone of voice for the record. Unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during the Hearing of the Citizens. All remarks should be addressed to the board as a body and not to any individual member thereof. Hearing of the citizens should last for a maximum up to 45 minutes. Any individual that signs up to speak during said section who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned mention time limit shall be given speaking priorities at the next board meeting. Absent chairman approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. Moving to 9A. You don't listen to the citizens? Yes, that's right. All right, Ms. McCloskey, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
We got anybody signed up?
Yes. Jane Kendrick?
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening. I just want to say good evening. It is a pleasure to be here. In the discussion of a possible development in the Axton, Cascade, Brazzville community, I am reminded of the words of Martin Niemola, a German pastor who lived and ministered under Hitler's Nazi Party during World War II. Niemola said, "First, they came for the socialist, and I did not speak out because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionist, and I did not speak out because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak for me." We are at a crossroads in this county. We have found ourselves at a point where we must decide as a community what we want our county to look like going forward. On one hand, we have those who say our county needs to grow, no matter the cost to current citizens, and in this particular matter, to the citizens of the Axton, Cascade, and Brazzville communities. Frankly, I have been pretty saddened by people who show no concern or empathy for what the families in these communities are experiencing, what they will experience in the future if this project is allowed to move forward as proposed. I am heartbroken when I hear comments such as, "It will be good for my business," or, "I'll make money," or, "That would be nice when the sewer hookup is close to my property," or the callousness of the individual that says, "Well, no, I wouldn't want it in my neighborhood, but if it's good for tax revenues, well, then..." Well, then what? Have we, as a community, as county citizens, truly become that callous, that desensitized to the plight of others, that we really do not care what happens across the county in other people's lives? Is everything we do, is everything the county leadership does, does it all have to revolve around the almighty dollar? Is this where we find ourselves today in 2023 in Pittsavania County? Are we really that cold and indifferent that we cannot see that a huge change such as what is being proposed here is detrimental to the way of life of our fellow county residents? Will we regret the decision made tonight, August 15, 2023, in the weeks, in the months, and in the years to come? Will we, like Niemola, realize too late that they came for my land, my community, my neighborhood, and no one was left to speak for me? Dan River, Westover, Bannister, Staunton River, Callens, Gretna, Chatham, Blairs, you must speak for us. The time is now. Thank you.
James Adams?
I'm James D. Adams, and I reside five minutes from where I was born 80-plus years ago, in the Tunstall District there in Brazzville. Standing before you this evening with much regret. One is that when we look at our community, which has been a stable community, in fact, when you look over the years, past years, just in the bill of permits that has been issued alone for that district versus the other districts, okay? You see, we've had a tremendous growth. When I retired 30 years ago, I moved back to where I am now, there by Brazzville Station. In the traffic, there's more traffic passes up and down, 58 now, within one hour than what it did then in 12 hours. In fact, it's all day long, it's all night long. One is that I would strongly urge that you do a traffic study before you arrive at a conclusion. The second thing is, our community has been a stable community, and that warrants some consideration. I would hope and pray that you would give this a very serious consideration. You need to look at the community. We have a stable community. We have people, residents, who has lived there all their lives, okay? And when you come in now, we've got to take into consideration our school system, okay? We don't need to diminish our education system, we need to improve it. I would strongly suggest that you revisit this application. In the end, I would suggest that you vote no. Thank you.
Kim Greer?
Welcome.
Thank y'all for letting me speak. I would like to just take this opportunity to just be thankful. The only good thing that has come from this proposed development is it has ignited the spirit of community. When we first found out about this development and the plans that would greatly affect our area, we wanted to do something, but we had no idea what to do, not even where to start. And then God allowed us to cross paths with some other people at the meetings that felt the same way that we did. From this wonderful group of people came the Axton Community Outreach and Tunstall District Community Outreach. We thank God for this group that has spent their time, talents, and even given their own personal money to help, to inform others about what's going on and how the code changes and rezoning would mean for our area and others countywide. We have all come together, a diverse people from every walk of life, for one common cause, to stand up for what we love and what we believe in. On social media, we are known as narrow-minded NIMBYs that are against growth and change, but that's not true. We are for housing, just not 2,000 to 4,000, maybe more, people in one square mile. We are for change, but this type of change, you have to admit, is a little extreme. Our group has been accused of lying or spreading wrong information. Now, there may be some out there that get a little wild hair every now and then and say something that's not right, but they're not members of our group exactly. We state and post the facts, and so people can read for themselves and make their own decisions. We have never forced anyone to sign a petition. We ran into a lot of people that had no idea what was going on, and we would tell them, you know, to read on it, give them the literature that comes straight from the county website about what was going on, and we told them if they wanted to sign a petition, we would be more than happy to come back. If there are any people that say that they signed a petition and they didn't know what it was about, most people know better than that. Who's going to sign something and they don't know what it is? But we had to return to several homes on Martin Drive with a translator to communicate with our Spanish-speaking community so that they would know and be informed of what was going on. Still, to this day, there are people that don't know what's going on in our community. And I'm so thankful to God and for this group of people and their efforts that have stood by us through it all, no matter what the outcome is tonight. I just want them to know how much I appreciate them. Thank you.
Michael Kendrick?
Thank you. Mike Kendrick, Tunstall District. I hope you can handle two Kendricks in one night. I'm here to talk about the planned development in Axton, and what worries me more is the zoning changes that we're trying to put into effect, okay? Like my wife said, our county is at a crossroads, and how we go about the goals and what we want to see our county become is very important, very important for, you know, I'm 67 years old. It's my grandkids that I worry about and their children, the direction our county goes. The first meeting I went to, you know, I felt like I was on a fast track to something, and I didn't quite know what it was, okay? I'm against drastically changing the zoning codes. I'm against it. You know, we have seven electric county supervisors. We respect y'all. We respect your judgment, and we elected y'all to guide us. But we'd also like to be heard. We want to be heard, and we felt like from the start, we weren't being heard on this. That's why, that's why we all came out. That's why we're trying to voice our opinions. I'm sure everybody's heard of the wreck in 97, right? Famous train wreck, right? What was, what was the goal? Why did that train wreck? It was because the conductor was in too big of a hurry to go somewhere. And I feel like that's what we are trying to do with these zoning codes and this big development in Axton. Not against the development. I grew up in construction, work construction, built houses, not against it. But what we put in the county should fit the county. You know, if you have a rural county, that doesn't mean that everybody's on a farm, okay? A rural county could be a five acre somewhere, that somebody's doing their thing, growing vegetables, raising some goats, whatever, okay? This, you know, this type of development is gaining a lot of traction in a lot of areas. And I know a lot of people don't want to hear this, but this is a 15-minute city, basically. development in Axton. Not against the development. I grew up in construction, work construction, built houses, not against it. But what we put in the county should fit the county. You know, if you have a rural county, that doesn't mean that everybody's on a farm, okay? A rural county could be a five acre somewhere, that somebody's doing their thing, growing vegetables, raising some goats, whatever, okay? This, you know, this, this type of development is gaining a lot of traction in a lot of areas. And I know a lot of people don't want to hear this, but this is a fifteen-minute city, basically. That's what it, that's what it molded after, fifteen-minute city. You know, the turtle was slow, but he was determined, and he won the race. That's all I'm asking. Let's look at this very carefully. Look at what we're trying to do, what we're trying to enact, because once it's done, it's going to be, you know, once you do something, it's hard to undo it. And that's all I ask, that's all all of us are asking. Slow down, let's examine it really good, let's examine these codes really good, let's make sure it's a good fit for our county. Thank you.
How are you, Mr. Moss?
Thank you. I'm Ken Moss. I live in Gretna, but I'm here representing my mother, Judy Moss, who lives in the Westover District, specifically off of the Buford Road down there. This is related to the Berry Hill Solar Project and the ongoing saga thereof that goes back three years to when the permit was, let's just say, it's not been clarified how the permit was issued. So the project is beginning to, it's going to start on September the 11th. The Dominion Power held a get-together in March with the public, which fifty or sixty people from that Buford Road area attended, along with several members here present tonight, representing the county. At that meeting, a map was presented that would be the final map that showed the two-hundred-foot buffer left in place, the natural buffer, to shield the solar panels from the area adjacent east of the project. I received a letter from Dominion Power, Alex Rendon, guaranteeing us that this map would be honored. Sometime after that, in May, Dominion approached the county as well as the DEQ to change that map and take out some of these trees to put a road in. The road in question was at the end, is at the end of the Buford Road. I had already agreed to Dominion to use my mother's road. I cleared it with the DEQ that they could use our road. They said, "No problem." I talked to the Corps of Engineers, the Corps of Engineers in Lynchburg said, "No problem." So now here we are. The permit has been altered. What has been told to the people is false. Dominion Power has reneged on what they have agreed to, and the members of this county were at that meeting and present. They know what I'm talking about. I'm asking the Board of Supervisors to ask the Director of Community Development to revoke the land use permit on this project until this matter can be settled. At the very least, Dominion Power, together with the county, should get these people together and allow for another public awareness hearing and at least be told what's going to be done to them. Because I did talk to Dominion Power today, they're going to send out a letter, "Oh, by the way, this is what's going to happen to you. Yeah, I know we told you we weren't going to do this, but here we are, we are going to do this." So I'm asking you guys to have this land use permit, land disturbance permit revoked, and that will put this project on hold until this matter can be settled with equitable, in an equitable fashion that is fair to the people, and so they know what's going to happen to them. This is just wrong, what's being done here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome. Hey, good evening, Board. I'm Elena Kiskaden. I live in the Tunstall District. So I wanted to speak kind of on two things, and the first that I wanted to touch upon is kind of is for the development. Matt Rowe had proposed at one of the meetings that we had, he's over economic development, and he asked what we want residential development to look like in our community. And so that is to say that we don't, we're not saying that we don't want development, which is a huge thing that people are trying to accuse those of us who are, you know, trying to resist this. What we want, and I think the key word that kind of needs to resound in your head, is about our identity. You know, as I told you guys previously, you know, I'm a new resident. I came here for the type of community that I wanted to be a part of, and I think that that needs to be taken into consideration. And we want, it's not that we don't want more people, we want more people that are going to mesh in with what we have and not compute, completely try to upset our balance of life, those of us that have farms or agriculture, you know, whether it be crops or animals or even just a quiet type of lifestyle. When you do super-high-density development, those people live a different type of lifestyle, and it does lead to a lot more noise and a lot more disturbance, and they might not appreciate chickens and horses and goats and stuff, you know, making such noise. So then that can lead to kind of disputes. We don't want disputes. We want everybody to get along. That is, that's what, that's huge for us. One of the other things that I wanted to address is kind of just some of the Board of Supervisors' actions. You know, I want to touch back on what other people have brought up before, you know, that our supervisors are supposed to represent their district's interest, what their citizens are asking of them. That's why you guys are elected, that's why you're here. It is not your decision to sit there and say, "Well, I think that this is best regardless of how many people are telling me that it's not good." You're not God, okay? Please remember and ask and follow God's will. And if you have so many people saying something to you, and they're being clear, and they're giving you good arguments, maybe you should sit down and try to take that time and hear what those people are legitimately, legitimately saying to you. I have been told that this is not going to affect me because I'm not directly on top of this. I didn't appreciate that. This, this is important, it's going to affect me. In particular, my child, I moved here for the school district. This is one hundred percent going to affect schools if this high density comes in, and that's not why I moved here. I moved here for the future of my child and for his education. Please take this into consideration in your voting and about the density in these code changes.
And I will say, we have some technical difficulties going on tonight. If you don't mind pulling the mic as close as you can get it so that the ones that are viewing remotely can hear your comments, that'd be great.
Welcome.
Good evening. Name is Thea Gutierrez. I will represent my husband as well. His name is Perpetuo Gutierrez, known as Gabby Gutierrez. We're both from the Philippines. Manila, very big, very, very populated. We thank God that he gave us this job to be able to support our families, extended families. I started out in Kentucky, loved it, rural. My husband started in New Jersey, Trenton. I had to move up there because my mother advised me to be with my husband. I only worked ten months in Trenton, New Jersey, and I made sure I got a job in Virginia for two physical therapists, and we ended up in Stewart, Virginia. Loved it, small town. Then he decided to work in Danville. I decided to work in Martinsville, that's how I ended up. We ended up in Brasville, middle. And when I came back, just this May from the Philippines, I get all this from friends, "Ooh, they're going to do a rezoning, they're going to make this big thing there, right there." And I, I didn't really know what it was. And then my neighbor actually was the one who gave me all the information, she was just trying to get me to say no. And I said, "Listen, I'm going to come here tonight because I want to hear about it." Twenty-eight years of our adult life we gave to this community, Pennsylvania County, Henry County, Patrick County. We love being in the rural area, so why are we going to be approving such a big community? All these years, we've been traveling. We're in Virginia, we go to my sister, to his uncle in New Jersey. So we have been traveling twenty-nine. And they changed every area. Lynchburg, Charlottesville, Gainesville, beautiful country. And then all of a sudden, it's like, "What the heck? Why are these buildings? What are these buildings for?" And they were high-density development and they're housing, and I keep asking the question. Who lives in these places? Really? Do they really afford the place or what? Anyway, my, our property abuts that property that's going to be developed, and definitely I'm against it because we have tried to keep a good, a haven for nature and for deer and turkeys and for hunters, they're welcome. We even invited deputies to come to our property so they can practice because sometimes they don't have places to practice. What I'm talking about is...
Ma'am, you're going to start winding down, your time has expired.
I know. But anyway, if we could just ask the Board to think about it, think of it as if it was your backyard that they're going to build this thing. Thank you.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Name's Irvin Moss.
Can I get you to pull that mic up? I'm sorry.
How about that?
You can hold it if you need to.
Pardon?
You can hold it if you need to.
Oh, I'm...
That'll make it easier for you.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you, thank you.
My name is Irvin Moss. I'm a member, well, I live in the Westover District of Pennsylvania County. And I guess you, you guys are asking me, "Why in the world am I here?" This is up in Axton, in the Tunstall District. Well, the decision made tonight is going to affect every landowner in the entire county. This is not a localized issue, it's countywide. And from that, I would like to open up with the words of the great President Abraham Lincoln. And at his Gettysburg Address, he quoted that "These dead shall not have died in vain; that this nation, under God, shall have a new birth of freedom; and that government of the people, by the people, and for the people, shall not perish from this earth." The reason I chose these words is I'm concerned over the direction of our county government. It looks like our county government has gone rogue, in my opinion. It looks like big money is the only thing our county is looking after. Our county is not listening to its citizens that have been here, that have paid taxes. The only thing that's in their interest, it seems, is big money. Last year, it was the RV park down on Vandola Road. The wishes of a few was trying to be pushed on a whole community. That seems to be what's happening here. The wishes of a few is being pushed again on a whole community. That bothers me. Another thing that bothers me is I've heard comments from our government leaders that they, they don't care what your, their constituents care or say, all they're concerned about is what's good for the county. Well, I have an issue with that. Each and every one of you was voted by one of us, your servants. You're supposed to look after us and not people from other areas that are foreigners to our area. You're supposed to look after county residents. So it is my prayer that you will take prayerful consideration of this matter and just remember who put you where you are and that we like the county life. We're not, you know, we're not opposed to growth, but I'm going to close. Everybody else has got to have a chance to. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David Law, the Bannister District. I'm also a member of the Board of Election. On June 8th, Supervisor Robert Tucker attended the monthly meeting of the Electoral Board in his official capacity. During his public comments, Mr. Tucker willfully chose to violate several of the standards in the Code of Ethics set forth by the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors. He chastised the Electoral Board for choosing not to reappoint Ms. Cassie as the General Registarr. According to the Board's Code of Ethics, he is supposed to act in the public interest for the common good of the people of Pennsylvania County and not for any private or personal interest. Mr. Tucker could have contacted any member of the Electoral Board before attending the June 8th meeting to determine if there were valid reasons for not reappointing Ms. Cassie, which I can assure you, there were many. He instead chose to support Ms. Cassie without knowing all of the facts, to what end, I do not know. The Electoral Board was being very careful about the information we were releasing at the time for not, for the reasons for not reappointing Ms. Cassie due to the unfolding personnel issues involved in the matter as she was still employed by the county. However, Supervisor Tucker would certainly have been given the details of how the Electoral Board came to their decision, had he chosen to ask. Rather than support the Electoral Board in our decision, Mr. Tucker chose to join with a small number of citizens who were and still are trying to make Ms. Cassie not being reappointed a political issue, when in reality, the decision was based on lack of performance and downright dishonesty on Ms. Cassie's part. Mr. Tucker also disregarded the points in the Model of Excellence that states he would keep the common good as his highest purpose and focus on achieving constructive solutions for public benefit, avoid and discourage conduct which is divisive or harmful to the best interests of Pennsylvania County, and treat all people with whom he interacts in the manner he himself wishes to be treated. Ms. Cassie was not reappointed as General Registarr because she was defrauding the county on multiple levels as part of a scheme in which she misled county administration into believing she was not a county employee and therefore did not have to follow county policies. Virginia Code 24.2-122 clearly states that General Registars are deemed county employees, and it was Ms. Cassie's job to know the Virginia Code related to election and registrar matters. Had Mr. Tucker bothered to speak with a member of the Electoral Board prior to the June 8th meeting, he would have been given the facts which he needed to appropriately conduct himself as a member of the Board of Supervisors. The Electoral Board was acting in the best interest of the county by not reappointing Ms. Cassie, preventing from, preventing her from further cheating and stealing from the hard-working, tax-paying citizens of Pennsylvania County. It's now up to you, the Board of Supervisors, to decide what happens as a result of these unethical and inappropriate actions of Mr. Tucker. I sincerely hope that the Code of Ethics is not merely words that look good on paper but have consequences when violated.
Your time has expired. Thank you, sir.
Frank Fox?
Evening Chairman Dalton, members of the Board, and Frank Fox, Chatham Blairs District. I'm sure you all know you're at a fork in the road as far as the Axton development... I'm sure you all know you're at a fork in the road as far as the Axton development. You decide if you're gonna go with tradition or transformation. In my two decades coming to these Board meetings, past supervisors talk about legacy votes. Edwin Shields, Hank Davis, Marshall Ecker, Jerry Hegerman, William Pritchett, and others. Not the vote you did last month, not the vote you're gonna do next month, but the vote you're doing now, a legacy vote. Your staggered terms on this Board, you did not expect six of you to have your terms up for election this year. One of you is not running again, the other five, it'll be up to the voters. So whether you've been on this Board for eight years or eight weeks, I know that every one of you loves Pennsylvania County. And they love, you love it in a way that is your best interest for your district. But I asked you, when you vote on this, to vote not for the district on your nameplate, but vote for your Pennsylvania County. Thank you.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right. Moving to item 9A. Mr. Warren.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I make the recommendation that the Board of Direct Staff, Ms. Emily Ragsdale and Mr. Vaden Hunt, to review and revise code changes to RPD to state that there should be, from this point, from the approval of the vote forward, that there will be a hundred-foot setback on the exterior of the property. That it has to be a minimum of twenty acres in size. That five percent of the thirty percent that has to be green space that is designated for recreational area cannot include any wetlands. And that anything that is operating as an RPD must have municipal water and sewer in place.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Any second. Hold your comment.
Yeah, I had a comment about that. Mr. Warren, I, I thought we agreed to twenty-five acres.
We, we did, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I meant to say twenty-five, and I said twenty. I'll amend my motion to be twenty-five acres as a minimum.
And I also wanted to say that this code has been on the books for years. And there's only been five applications in the history of this county for any RPD applications. And so when many people call me about, I've got five acres, or somebody's got five acres and I'm worried about them building this mystical fifteen-minute city, which is totally false, we talked about, what could we do moving forward to put you at ease that you don't have to worry about a neighbor that may have in excess of five acres? Well, we, we just worked on it collectively. We kicked it up to twenty-five. And so if you listen to what he said, that piece of property has to be available for water and sewer hookup, and there's a lot of places in this county that it's not there. And you're talking about millions of dollars to run water, to run sewer. I mean, heck, we're going through it right now, we're trying to get you internet. So, in essence, and I'm very grateful to this Board for what he just said, because a lot of the fear that has been put into several of you just evaporated. And do remember, we don't have but so many millionaires out here. And that's what it takes, people with a lot of money or assets to be able to build projects. And through the years, just think about around Danville, who, who built these housing developments? Well, Earl White would be one that come to mind, Donald Hardison would be come to mind. So, you know, when we talk about the history of this county, we talk about housing developments, we are really far behind, but anyway, I'll, I'll come back to some of that. But anyway, I'm gonna second your motion, Mr. Warren, and that is some good suggestions. Thank you.
Any, any more discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I, I wanna thank staff. I requested a meeting with them as late as this afternoon because I got phone calls and I got emails and I got text messages from citizens. And I listened to a lot of concerns and I listened to a lot of input. And your opinions and all, for the time I've served on this Board, has always been important to me. I've, obviously, over the last few months, I've talked to every one of my colleagues as it relates to this. And I particularly wanna thank my colleague and my friend, Mr. Scares, as he may be the strongest advocate for citizens' input and opinions that I certainly have ever served with. And he and I have gone back and forth a lot about the pros and cons of this particular situation. So I'm gonna be supporting these changes that I just recommended, obviously, I made the motion. And it, you know, from a standpoint of growing the county and all that, there may be some situations that come forward in the next fifty years that it doesn't need to be a hundred-foot. But if that's the case with a developer, then they will have the ability to come back to the Board of Supervisors and request that that be changed. Because everything is moving and changing. So I do think it's very important to, to let you all know that, and I, and I think I can say it for everyone sitting up here, you know, we heard you, we listened to you, we try to weigh it out. It's one of those tough votes. I'm not sure I'm gonna say frank that it's a legacy vote, but it's certainly a, a tough vote. And I hope when, regardless of the outcome of everything tonight, when we leave, we can leave feeling like your voice was heard and that it does matter. And I don't think you should ever quit expressing your voice and being heard and going to the voting box and voting in, voting in who you want to represent you. So I certainly strongly advocate for that because that's what our country is founded on and all. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Warren. Any more comments? Anybody?
Ron's-
Yes, sir, Mr. Scares.
Yeah, I just wanna say, make sure you guys know, some of these changes are gonna be voted on next week on the RPD code. And I approve of those because they take a lot of the concerns that you've had under consideration and makes it a better code. But I will not vote for the code that's gonna come up later that it's on the books for this meeting because it, it leaves a lot to be desired. The thing that worries me is that one of the only few places that another one of these RPD-type places can show up is in my district. And I certainly wanna let the people in my district know, if I happen to be serving next year, that I will take into consideration your concerns for these type of developments and will try to take the input from you and make the changes that will make you happy. And tonight, the RPD code that we're gonna vote on later, I do not approve of that. And luckily, the developer for the Axton project has come and made a lot of concessions, which is different from the RPD code we're voting on tonight. And I appreciate their willingness to work with you guys. And I appreciate the fact that you guys have come together and pushed this as hard as you have because that's the only way you're gonna make changes, is coming out in full force like you have, and I appreciate that. But for this motion, currently, I will vote for those changes because it makes the RPD code better, but I will not vote for the RPD code that is actually on the books for tonight. So I just wanna make sure you guys know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scares. Any more comments? Any member? Yep, I mean, I'd like to echo really some of the same comments. I mean, I thank everybody for coming out and your comments. They were all good. Appreciate you being here. And I've got a lot of calls, a lot of emails. I mean, I got, I'm gonna be honest, I got friends that's for it and I got friends that's against it. And I'm gonna stick with my friends. I mean, that's the best way for me to say it. Thank you. Any more questions? Any from other members? No, ma'am. I'm sorry, we can't take any questions, anything to the audience. All right, gentlemen, are we ready to vote on this change? All right. No more discussion?
I just wanna make sure, this is just for the changes that Bob-
This is those changes that Bob read into 9A.
They'll be brought back next month after a public hearing next week.
That's correct.
Yep, that's right.
Yeah, that's good.
All right. Motion passes for the changes.
I didn't get to vote.
You didn't get to vote, ma'am?
No, she put me in because I'm-
I guess she did.
Did it come in?
It popped up like you voted.
Okay.
You are a yes vote, though, correct.
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item 10, Public Hearings, 10A, Other Public Hearings. Each person addressing the Board under public hearings shall step up, give his or her name and district and/or his or her place of residence, non-county citizens, in an all-in-all tone of voice for the record. And unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. Speakers for a group shall be limited to ten minutes. Speakers shall conclude their remarks at that time unless the consent of the Board affirmatively gives the extended speaker allotted time. Absent chairman approval, no person shall be able to speak whom has not signed up. 2023 Year-End County Budget Amendments. Ms. Vanderheide, welcome.
Good evening, Chairman Dalton. I am here tonight as I am each year as the Finance Department is working on finalizing the end of the year, June 30, 2023. And so as such, we have to review each department to ensure that all budgets have sufficient budget balances at year-end. Most of these are bookkeeping entries, some do require additional appropriation of funds that were received by the county but have not been previously appropriated by you all. So we have to review those, and if the amount exceeds our current budget by one percent, a public hearing must be held. Tonight's public hearing is needed because those total 7,409,34679. This is not the need for additional funds, it's just the need to make sure that our books are in order when the auditors come in. And we will start our final fieldwork in October, so all of these changes must be done at that time. So after you all have heard public input on this, if there are any folks that are signed up, you are able to vote tonight. These amendments have been published in the Star Tribune as well as on our county's website, and you all should have received copies of those in your Friday update. And so everyone should have sufficient time to have reviewed these. They've been on the street for about two weeks now. And I'm here to answer any questions, should you have any.
All right, thank you, Ms. Vanderheide. At 8:08, I opened a public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up, Ms. McFoster?
No, sir.
Okay. 8:09, I closed the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the budget amendment.
Mr. Chairman, as Finance Chairman, I make the motion, we approve the amendment revised numbers that's presented by Ms. Vanderheide.
Thank you, Mr. Warren, got a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tucker? Thank you, sir. Any discussion on the motion? If none, we're ready to vote. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Vanderheide. Moving on to item 2, Public Hearing of Public Code and Code Amendments. Ms. Ragsdale.
Mr. Chairman, Board members, we're gonna do this a little differently than I normally do. I normally provide you a short introduction, then you have a red line version in your packet. But several Board members have asked me to give an in-depth, in-depth explanation of these proposed changes. And so I'm gonna do a short PowerPoint presentation with each proposed change and some graphics that will help, hopefully, help explain those. So this is just an overview of the purpose of RPD, and it's directly out of our current zoning ordinance, so it talks about how the district is to promote large-scale development that's a mix of commercial and residential to provide comprehensive communities for people to live in. The first proposed change is a change to the uses allowed by special use permits. Currently, everything that's currently in the ordinance is in black. Everything that is being removed is in red with a strike-through. Everything that is being proposed to be added is underlined in red. So currently, it says, "Commercial uses such as stores, service centers, offices, et cetera, is allowed by special use permit." The applicants wanted to clarify the et cetera, so they proposed to strike that, and I add retail, grocery stores, hotels, assisted living, skilled nursing, and other similar uses, just to clarify that language. Next is the minimum lot size. Everything in black is what is currently in the ordinance. They propose to add the language that is in red, and it's a little hard to read on the screen, so I'll read it to you. So it says that currently, all lots have to follow the current R1 size requirements, which can be reduced down to 10,000 square feet or about a quarter of an acre, as long as they have access to public water and sewer. This would still apply to all properties rezoned RPD. However, the Board would have the ability to approve smaller lot sizes and setbacks as part of a rezoning application to the RPD Residential Planned Unit Development District, which may allow single-family detached lots to be a minimum of 1,400 square feet, and the single-family attached unit lots may be a minimum of 1,300 square feet. But that is only, that would only be with the Board's approval if this is passed. The next change is to the density. Again, everything in black is what is currently allowed. The applicants have proposed to add the language, "The Board of Supervisors may approve a maximum density for the residential planned unit development that exceeds the unit's per-gross acre stated in this ordinance as part of a rezoning application to RPD Residential Planned Unit Development District." This is the front setback, and this graphic is kinda hard to read on the screen, and I apologize for that, so I'll try to explain what's shown. The black setback, or the black wording, is what's currently required in the ordinance, and that is 35 feet from the edge of the right-of-way as a front setback. And the applicants are proposing, they proposed to reduce that to 20 feet and then allow porches to extend into that 10 feet. Staff was not comfortable with that for exterior property line setbacks, so staff proposed retaining the 35 feet that's currently in the ordinance and only allowing the changes to interior property lines that would be created as part of the development. On that, the graphic that you can see, it's kinda hard to see, but these are, this is done in GIS, so the lots are to scale, the lot sizes to scale as to what they're proposing. The light blue line is the front setback at 20 feet. There's a purple line that is the side setback of six feet. There's an orange line that's the rear setback of 20 feet. And then on the corner lot, you can see the 20-foot front yard setback required as well. as well. The side setback, um, the same thing, it was asked to be reduced to 6 feet, allowing porches, um, soups, et cetera, to extend 2 feet into that setback for a reduction of 4, to 4 feet, so you would be able to be 4 feet from the side of your house to your property line. Um, staff is not comfortable reducing that for exterior property lines, so again, we retained the current 10-foot setback, um, for those exterior property lines, and then, um, the applicants have proposed that reduction to 6 for interior property lines that are created as part of the project. And this is the same graphic, again, showing what that would look like. The rear setback, um, again, staff retained the 30-foot rear setback that is currently required by the RPD zoning classification, um, and the applicants have requested that interior setbacks be reduced to 20 feet, um, from the rear property line, and then allowing, um, windows, porches, bays to extend into that, and then accessory structures be able to be located 5 feet from the property line. Some of the language staff removed regarding Smith Mountain Lake and Leesville Lake, um, this is because we previously changed our ordinance to recognize the portion of the property between the principal structure and the lake as the front yard. Um, it was never cleaned up in this section, so staff, that's why that language has been removed. That was done by staff, not the applicant, um, because it currently does not apply. So the minimum distance between buildings, um, the applicant requested to reduce this below 15 feet. Staff met with our Public Safety Department, um, our Fire Marshal's Office. They felt that 15 feet was adequate room for a fire truck to get between principal structures, um, and still have adequate room to work. Um, so staff has retained the 15-foot distance between principal structures in the proposal. This is corner lot requirements. Um, this was, again, exterior setbacks are being retained at 35 feet, um, on corner lots. And, and what that means is a, that's a lot that has two road frontages. Um, and so you would be required to meet your road frontage, or your front yard setback on both sides of your property that front a street. Um, so this is allowed to be reduced to 20 feet, um, and within the project, and then they could put an accessory structure within 5 feet of that, as long as it did not block any, any site, um, visibility. So this is the open space requirement, and again, this graphic is a little dark on the screen, but this is a rendering of what the development would look like, or portion of the development would look like, meeting the 30-foot, I mean, the 30% open space that's required, um, in the proposal. So currently, it's at 50 feet, 50%. Um, they are requesting that that be reduced to 30%. Um, so this is a rendering that would show what that would look like. Um, currently, the develop, this portion of the development is broken down into 30% open space, 45% of lots, lot coverage, and then about 25% of this is roads. They also asked that recreational space be clarified, um, and they requested to add consisting of parks, play areas, and similar recreational areas, or recreational uses. This proposal, um, it proposed change relate, change relates to alleys and private streets. Previously, we did not allow private streets in RPD. It was brought to staff's attention that by not allowing private streets, we were potentially reducing, um, a townhome's ability to have its own private driveway because of the spacing requirements between attached, um, single-family dwellings. So this just shows how close those driveways would need to be. Um, they would likely not meet VDOT spacing requirements, um, between entrances on a public street, so therefore, VDOT would not approve them, and VDOT would not, um, take this into their road system for maintenance. So they are proposing, um, this language that would allow the Board of Supervisors to approve those private streets and alleys, um, as part of the rezoning process. And an alley is basically, um, by definition, it just serves the back of a, of a structure. Um, so it's basically an access street for trash collection or deliveries or things like that. So staff added some definitions to our zoning ordinance to clarify what some of these uses are, um, just to clarify what a multifamily dwelling is, to thoroughly, um, explain in our ordinance and to be able to, to justify what we allow and what we don't allow. So as you can see, there's, um, some changes to a multifamily dwelling. We added the definition of a single-family attached dwelling, um, and a single-family detached dwelling. And we also clarified, um, the definition of a dwelling unit, and that's just to provide clarity to this section. Um, these definitions will apply to the entire ordinance, not just RPD, but the entire ordinance will always reference back to these definitions whenever they are mentioned, so that just allows staff, um, more clarity and enforcement. And so who will this affect? Um, I've gotten lots of questions about what properties would be eligible for rezoning in RPD. Um, so currently, the properties that we have that are zoned RPD, there are five of them. Um, there are two subdivisions up at the lakes, one's on Leesville Lake, um, there's Vista Point at Smith Mountain Lake, there is the dock at SML property at, on Smith Mountain Lake, there is the, um, old Alta Vista Golf Course in Hurt, and then there is a property, um, right outside of the city of Danville. Those are currently the only RPD properties that we have in the entire county. In order for any of those projects to change what they originally submitted with their rezoning proposal, they would have to come back before this board. So if they wanted to take, take advantage of any of the changes in the current proposed ordinance amendments, they would have to submit an application, come back before the Board of Supervisors, um, present a new concept plan, and then you all would have to approve it before staff could allow them to start construction or approve any changes that they're proposing. Additionally, for any potential future rezonings, again, um, you all have instructed staff to look at additional regulations like connecting to public water and sewer. Um, that's gonna greatly limit what properties would be eligible for this zoning. And then, again, they would have to meet the comprehensive plan, what the comprehensive plan designates as medium to high-density residential. This would never be allowed, um, in an area of the county that was only agricultural and rural residential for the future land use designation, designation in the comprehensive plan. Um, staff would never recommend this, an RPD re, an RPD zoning, um, for that future land use. Additionally, they would need to go through the traffic impact analysis for VDOT, um, before coming to you all, or they would need to meet all entrance requirements for VDOT if they didn't have enough trips per day to trigger that TIA. Um, so that, that is also going to be a, a reduction for the amount of properties that could even apply for an RPD rezoning. Um, and then the last one, if we adopt the ordinance changes for public water and sewer, that, that's a moot point, but, um, currently, the Health Department regulates well-inseptic and this, the distance requirements, um, and setbacks for structures and property lines and things from those, um, those two facilities. So they would regulate the lot size, and they would have to sign off on lot size, and that would greatly restrict density. And that is all I have. If you all have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any, any questions for Ms. Ragsdale?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I believe between what Mr. Warren proposed, which would be brought up next month, and it will be subjected to a public hearing, not to be confused with what we're looking at tonight. So in 10 words or less, it's not a whole lot of difference between what we're gonna look at then versus what we're looking at now, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. And, and so, and it's fair to say that before any of these projects can get off the ground, they're heavily vetted, not only by your office, but by the Health Department, and at the end of the process, and which is, it is a long process, the traffic impact analysis that will be submitted to DMV, which is paid for by the developers, will be reviewed by VDOT traffic safety experts. They will in turn come back to us and tell us this is or isn't gonna work, and they'll make suggestions on traffic safety. So between the start and the end of a process, it is heavily vetted, correct?
Yes.
And everything that you can think of, whether we're talking about environmental, health, stormwater, erosion, traffic, is looked at in a, and?
At some point in the process, yes.
Right.
Some of those things are looked at, um, prior to rezoning. Some of them will be looked at once a rezoning is approved. Um, so erosion, sediment control, and stormwater, those things are done as part of the construction phase. Um, there's a lot of engineering processes that wouldn't take place until after a rezoning is approved, um, so that the project can begin moving forward, um, and can undertake some of those things. But all of these things would have to be reviewed, meet all requirements, and that's state, federal, and local requirements prior to being able to move any dirt on the property.
So it's, it is a fair statement to say that this is a very long, methodical process.
Yes.
And much of the cost goes to the investors and developers, correct?
Yes.
It is not on the backs of the taxpayers?
No.
Okay. Um, Mr. Hunt, let me, uh, refer to you. Do you feel like that the difference between what we're doing tonight versus what we'll do in September has been clarified?
Um, I understand what's going on. I think the board does. The question is, does the public understand? I, I think that it's, it's very similar, what's going on. We're just tweaking and fine-tuning some friction points in September.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, one more thing, Emily. Go ahead. Um, how, how long have you worked for the county?
Um, three years in April.
Okay. But you had prior experience with the city of Danville.
I did.
Your tenure here, have you seen any project like this?
Um, we had, I've had one application. Um, it's not rezoning to RPD. It was a special use permit, um, for one of the RPD properties at Smith Mountain Lake, and that was, um, they're a marina. Um, they are, were considered legal non-conforming because they were in operation prior to the zoning ordinance being adopted, and they were requesting to make some expansions. So they needed to get a special use permit to bring them into compliance with the current ordinance, but I have not experienced any rezoning applications for RPD except for this one since I've been here.
And, and with this current application, the, um, property is currently zoned R1, A1, I'm sorry?
That's correct.
Which in essence, by right, the property owners could build 1,200 houses, correct?
Yes, they can, um, subdivide to half an acre lots.
Okay. And so if they came to us and said, hey, let's go R1, it would be 2,400 houses, correct?
That's correct. To that point, if they could provide water and sewer, they'd be allowed to reduce the lot size to 10,000 square feet or a quarter acre.
So with the request as far as a rezoning tonight, that is sort of a midway point. It's not 1,200, it's surely not 2,400?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. England. Mr. Warren?
Uh, yes, Ms. Ragsdale. Of the five that are RPD now, they're, they're in. I mean, they're already RPD. However, once the meeting happens next Wednesday, and we make those changes that I proposed and we unanimously passed earlier, how many of those five would have been eligible to be RPDs?
Probably only one of them.
That was my point. About 80% of them would have been cast out. That's why making these additional restrictions and all only protects the citizens and their voice going forward, correct?
That's correct.
And the changes, actually, the RPD was less than a lot of the changes that are being made if it was approved RPD already, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, so my point being in that, you know, we're trying to give more voice, but anybody that's doing an RPD will have to come before the Board of Supervisors with a site plan that has to be approved, that has all the details, correct?
That's correct.
And it'll have to be a public hearing.
That's correct.
So regardless of where it may occur in the county, let's say it's Chatham Blair's district, the citizens of Chatham Blair's will have an opportunity, just like these fine folks from the Tuscal district up near Axton have had. They will have an opportunity to be heard, even with all these changes, to be sure that they're happy, and it'll be up to the board at setting at that time to even approve the site plan up or down.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. But, but in order for, everything you've got pretty much in the changes now almost exclusively deals with inside of the RPD?
Yes.
Okay? Not exterior setbacks and all of that? Not the things we're gonna fix next month?
Correct. Staff retained all of the current ordinance requirements that were adopted in 1991 when the current zoning ordinance was adopted, creating the RPD zoning district.
And think I'm clear on this. In order to move anything forward with the project that's gonna be presented tonight, we have to make these interior changes. Is that correct?
Yes, or you would not be able to approve their site plan that has to be approved as part of the rezoning process.
Okay. Just wanna make sure I understood.
Thank you. Any more questions, Ms. Rags? Mr. Gaff?
Got a couple. I, I guess, uh, it sounds like everyone gets to vet this project except for the citizens that are gonna be directly affected. Can't hear me? I said it sounds like everyone's gonna get to vet this project except for the citizens that are directly affected, and, uh, my question to, to address the fact that we're gonna need to have water and sewer access, what districts currently, right now, do you feel would be, uh, a good candidate for this? That, like I said, I think, believe the Westover District will be a candidate because of where some of the land masses are. Is there any other district that might have this possibility?
I, I'm not an expert on where the county's water and sewer infrastructure is. Chris Adcock, our, um, Public Works Director, may be able to better speak to that. Not sure where he is. Um, but I, I do know that we have water that covers a good portion, um, of especially the lower portion of the county, and then we have some water service around some of our towns. Um, but I don't think that we have as much sewer infrastructure. Um, so I know that stays mainly around the city of Danville, um, but I know even at R and L Smith Road, they don't have sewer connections. So it doesn't come that far out of the city of Danville or extend that far out of the towns.
It does go down the 58 corridor, though, on the west side. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Dunn?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir. Emily, thank you for what you do. Appreciate the job that you've done. Um, I'd like for you to clarify some things. We are in the process right, right now, we have hired the Berkeley Group to do some rewriting of some of our ordinances and things that we need to change. Could you clarify about the red lines versus the black lines? I know that you said it, but, um, during the presentation, the black lines is what is this now? The red is what we're going to?
So there's, there's two reds?
Yes.
Um, the red with the strike through?
Yes, ma'am.
Is what was in the ordinance that's being removed?
That's correct.
The red that is underlined is what is replacing that?
We're going to.
Or being added, yes.
We're going to that. We're going to that.
But everything black is existing currently.
Okay. All right. That's what I need. We've been working on that for?
We've been working with the Berkeley Group for a little, right at a year now.
Yeah, yeah, it's been some time. We have in special meetings with Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals to keep them all abreast of what is going on. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Dunn? Any more questions? No? Do we have anybody signed up to speak on it?
We do, and if I could get you to open that public hearing.
Let me open the public hearing, okay. At 8:35, I open the public hearing.
Joey Fawcett?
Mr. Fawcett. Welcome, Mr. Fawcett. Mr. Daniel?
Thank you very much, Chairman Dalton. I appreciate that. I'm joined this evening by the Vice Chair of the IDA, John Daniel, and I have the privilege of chairing Industrial Development Authority. And from that body, I bring to you a resolution this evening supporting the Axton housing development on the north side of Route 58, Tunstall District, Virginia.
Mr. Fawcett, I apologize. Can you hold that mic if you don't mind? You can, there you go. Thank you.
Hoba, hoba. Okay. The Pennsylvania County Industrial Development Authority, in its Wednesday, July 19, 2023 meeting, presented and adopted this following resolution. Whereas the Axton housing development would provide additional housing options for both current and new residents, and as such would be a great asset to our community. Whereas Pennsylvania County's continuing economic development success plan must include housing solutions, which provide a high quality of life for all persons. And whereas the location of the Axton housing development is ideal with direct access to Route 58, while also in close proximity to the southern Virginia mega site at Berry Hill, thus directly supporting economic development. And whereas, as Pennsylvania County and the region continues to grow and develop, the demonstrated need for housing and supported quality of life services is more essential. And the 614 acre multi-use development with its 1,900 housing units plus retail stores addresses this need. And whereas the development requires the rezoning of the property to residential planned unit development district by the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors. And whereas an application has been made to rezone the property, which was unanimously recommended for approval by the Pennsylvania County Planning Commission during its meeting on June 6, 2023, and which awaits your final action this evening. Whereas the Pennsylvania County Industrial Development Authority strongly believes this project will benefit Pennsylvania County's citizenry and tax base for the aforementioned reasons. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Pennsylvania County Industrial Development Authority fully supports the property rezoning for the Axton housing project, given under my hand this 19th day of July, 2023, Dr. Joey Fawcett, Chair. Gentlemen, lady, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all.
Roland Bowers?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I've been sitting here a while.
Yeah.
I can still call you ladies and gentlemen tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Listen, I don't have any prepared speech or anything like that. I just want to tell you my personal experiences.
Sir, can you pull your mic up?
Okay, sorry. Just want to tell you my own personal experiences with land development. I used to work in real estate for about 10 or 12 years, and I did residential sales, I did commercial sales, and also did land development. And I, at the time, I really enjoyed doing that, but I don't see any benefit to having this type of development in this area. Because if you look at the 30 years from now, if that was all done right now, look at 30 years, you will have that multifamily apartments and townhouses turn into a ghetto. I've seen it myself where I came from and where I did. I'm not ashamed of what I did because I have nothing against development of a house here, there, wherever a person has a property that the zoning's correct. I'm not for changing that zoning so that some developer can put in many, many apartments. I heard somebody say 2,400 apartments. Just think of how many cars that is. Two cars per apartment, that's almost 5,000 cars. And so I'm not for that, and I support it. You ought to consider what I just said. I can only say that I really like it here in Pennsylvania County. I've lived here for 12 years now, and I decided that tonight I was going to get involved in politics because I didn't do that before where I came from. And now the county that I came from has 250,000 people in it, and it's about one-third the size of Pennsylvania County. And so you can't make a left turn anywhere in where I came from. If, if there's not a traffic light there, you're not making a left-hand turn. And so I think I said that right. Anyway, that's all I got to say about it. I hope you just consider what I said. Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Chairman Dalton. My name's Kenneth Wood. I'm from the Tunstall District. I also have large parcels of land in the Chatham Blair's District. And I think some people in Pennsylvania County need to wake up and pay attention to what's going on. Our way of life and especially our future generations are being threatened. Some people claim, portray and promote a grand illusion of progress and growth. A huge decision will be made by our Board of Supervisors tonight, while many in the county are not even aware of what's going on around us. This in time will threaten and forever change the rural way of life for the residents and farmers that prefer to live a country lifestyle versus the city way of living. If the Board agrees on the changes for this high-density development, these changes will create an opening for investors to do this in other districts throughout the county. For generations, our family has farmed and owned farmland in the Tunstall High School area. More and more times, we're getting phone calls from outside investors seeking to buy up our farmland. Now that I can see clearly through the illusion of the high-density developments that is planned for the Axton area, it makes more and more sense why we're getting these calls from investors wanting to get a head start swooping up the farmland, anticipating the changes that is incoming and a change that will open the door to the entire county. More and more investors will seek to do the same, painting a pretty picture over an ugly truth while pushing illusions of progress and growth to those of high positions without others to gain, excuse me, with those in high positions with revealing any of the cons or negatives that could result from such, while persuading others to gain support. Some are normally well-meaning people, even those that are in high positions. In reality, the ultimate drive and desire for investing is bigger, larger profits for self and those that are willing to hold hands with them at the sacrifice of the residents here in our county.
Welcome.
Chairman Dalton and Board of Supervisors, I had a prepared something to share with you, but that whole thing, and what I was asking you, Chair, was just, we needed a little bit further explanation. We were a little confused. That's why we were raising our hand like students in classrooms, trying to say, wait a minute, what was going on? So let me get back to my somewhat prepared speech that's tore up. We, this group of people, lots of them with these shirts on, we have been the ones pounding the pavement, making calls, going to meetings, trying to rain together people to say, this is what's happening in the county. That's who's been doing this. I have been or have talked to people in every single district that don't know anything about this. And so you might want to hide right now behind the little additional change about the water in the sewer. It's not in my area, I don't have to worry about it. It will be in your area soon. So your name is going to be attached to these changes, period. So I do want to say a couple of things. I was confused about this. One of our supervisors just pointed out the number of houses that are able to be built. I've studied the codes to the best of my ability for the past two and a half months. I am well aware of the houses. Build them. Build the houses. The RPD changes that you're talking about, though, include grocery stores. Oh, everyone wants a grocery store, I guess. I've lived in the county for 40-plus years. The grocery stores have always been where they're at, and it's not a problem to me. If you move to this county, drive to the grocery store. Plan your trips. You're going to go work at Berry Hill? The grocery store is right there. Go to it. That's one thing. The RPD changes also include that it's kind of conveniently left out. Put a hotel out there. Put a hotel anywhere. That's ridiculous. It's ridiculous. The traffic alone is insane. A skilled nursing and other similar uses. That phraseology, if my students wrote that, I'd throw it back at them and say, it's not going to fly. Be more specific. What exactly are you talking about? So it's just wide open. All these places where the Board of Supervisors can make changes, right now, you're probably pretty confident thinking you'll do a good thing for the citizens, but what about future Board of Supervisors? What about them? Now, the, the issue here, and has always been from our group, the commercial, the commercial side. Someone mentioned, do we want tradition or transformation? I want to say that we want to hold on to our traditions in this county, and you can have some transformation, but ravaging a countryside and sticking thousands of people in one square mile is absolutely insane. That's not transformation. That is destruction of the highest degree. And this board has got to address that tonight. And so I just want to close in just saying, we have a right to be heard. And I keep hearing, and again, with students, I would say, there's a difference between hearing and listening. Is our message, is it coming through to anyone? Or are we just talking and bouncing off the wall and in an echo chamber? And I would dare say that if you had more residents from your areas here, they would be asking the same questions and they would have the same concerns. So please look at it from our point of view as well. And we are still a little bit confused about what happened here just a minute ago with the changes. We'll sort that out when we get home. Thank you.
Let me speak again. Please vote no to the code changes that will allow high-density housing. With the recent news of the co-applicant withdrawing his application from the project, people think that we should just sit back and take a breath and a sigh of relief, but that's not true. If these codes are changed, the co-applicant can apply at a later date. This is a concern for us because he is the one that backed out of the application because he didn't agree with giving 100-foot setbacks. But that is a battle for another time, and we will be ready when that happens. In the past year, they have been meeting secretly about the development. They could have already had plans for a nice housing development in the works, since they say that such need of housing is needed here. But it's not about the need, it's about the greed. I know you can't tell somebody what to do on their own land, but in this case, you seven will make that decision tonight. The reason that that decision is in your hands is because they don't want to abide by the codes that our county already has in place. We do not want or need any of the businesses that are proposed with this development. I have lived in this area all my life, and it's common knowledge that one day a week, you go to town, you run your errands, including the grocery store. Where we live is a very convenient area for that. Within 15 to 20 minutes, you can be in Danville, Eden and Martinsville. If in need, we have convenience markets that are locally owned and operated by community members that have always been there for us. We are here to respectfully ask you to vote no. We are here for those that we know personally that can't come out here tonight because of their health problems. And we're asking you, for those that have heard but act like they don't care or they don't want to get involved, and it's not because they're afraid of us. We are here for those to plead with you that still haven't heard about the development. Just Sunday night, we were out fixing one of our signs, and a gentleman pulled over. He lives in Axton, and he wanted to know what it was about. So please vote no on these code changes. Thank you.
Michael Kendrick, Tunstall District. As I said before, I'm against these code changes. You know, I heard something tonight, and it validated why I'm against these code changes. Time and again, I heard Emily say one thing. They have requested. They have requested. They have requested. Hey, it's our county. Let's do what we want to do. We want to, if we want to change the codes, let's, us do it, not what somebody else is requesting, okay? That, that, and I'll be honest with you, the old codes suit me fine. Suit me fine. If you have something special and, and you want to do something just for that special development or something, that's fine, but let's not change everything just for one development. 50 foot of green space, that's been changed to 30 feet, okay? What's wrong with 50 feet? That's a nice development in the county. 50 feet of green space, okay? Putting a house within six feet of a property line, I mean, I just, I don't see it out in the county. In the city, a suburb near the city? Okay, I can see it. Everything that this is going to allow is going to tax, is going to tax everything in our county, okay? Putting this big of a development in one place, why do we have to put this, why do we have to try to solve the whole county's housing shortage in one place? I don't understand that. And, you know, you've got to have people that are going to want to go here and live, you know? Not everybody's going to want to go to one place and live. There's reasons you go to the county to get a few acres, to get, even if you don't, you know, a half acre. A lot of people move to the county and they're just tickled to death to have a half acre. The maximum density on the old code, three single families per acre. Hey, that seems a plenty to me. And, and all the examples throughout here, I just don't see the need to change it because they have requested. Thank you.
Good evening, Board members. I filled up a whole trash can with notes.
Sir, can I get you to hold that? Thank you.
I filled up a whole trash can with my speech for the past three weeks, and I haven't been able to get it together. But these changes to the RPD codes... But these changes to the RPD codes just dilutes what they protect. They protect green spaces in our community, in our county. They protect the environment. And they shouldn't be watered down or diluted at the request of the developers. That just gives them more room to pack these houses together, as we've seen tonight in the presentation of the request. So I urge each and every one of you to consider what that is. And part of your bylaws, Section 35.3, you are to consider the fact of not allowing the disruption of a community by allowing something that doesn't fit there. Your codes of conduct, as far as these things go, is to not allow... See, I can't even get it together, there's so much happening to speak to you guys. But the gist of it is, what you're, what you're committed to here is to protect us against high-density, overpopulation of, of living spaces. And those are what your codes are. Your code and your bylaws represent. And I think each and every one of you should follow those when you make this decision. Thank you.
Natalie Bennett.
My name is Natalie Bennett. I live in the Axon community in the Tunstall District. I want to speak to you all tonight, of course, about the RPD code changes and about the fact that we do not want high density in our community. We are all for housing. We appreciate bringing new members to our community. We welcome all kinds of people to our community. I want to thank you for taking all the phone calls and all of the emails and text messages. I know we have been literally blowing you up, but honestly, if we had been let in the loop a lot sooner, without all of the apprehension and fear, that would have been probably a changing moment in the history of what's happening here. We were truly left out of the loop. We were left to figure everything out for ourselves, and we've been working diligently to do that. I want to ask you, our elected board of supervisors, have you done your due diligence in ensuring the proposed changes to these codes have resonated with your constituents? Again, you've heard this over and over again. Do your people know what these code changes could mean to your people? What if this were coming to your community? Would they understand? I would venture to say no. Your bylaws, as written, being abided by if you allow for high density, are they? Your bylaws state that your purpose is to promote health, safety, welfare of the public, and adopt orderly and controlled development. In doing so, you're bound to reduce or prevent congestion to public streets. Your bylaws also charge you with ensuring adequate protection by police, fire, and rescue. You have to know that those services will be stretched to the verest thinnest of the limits. There's no way that the emergency services personnel that are in our community now can take on four to five thousand more residents, even in ten years. It's simply not possible. I've been teaching school in the county for thirty-three years. I drive a school bus on Martin Drive and on Highway 58, where this resident will land. The density, the high density of this is absolutely concerning to me. Have you crossed 58 twice with a busload full of children? And now you're thinking of adding four to five thousand more cars traveling on those roads? I teach at Tunstall High School. I teach at Tunstall Middle School. I'm going to give you some numbers. You tell us not to worry about the educational component here, that there's plenty of space. And I completely respect our superintendent for the numbers that he delved out. And I understand that there may be seats available in classes, but did you know that English classes are capped at twenty-four students? There is a teacher shortage already. There are bus driver shortages. Did you get the phone call telling you that there's kids that are going to be an hour late getting home because there aren't enough drivers to get them there? Did you know that we have children that are waiting to get English classes, and they can't because the caps that the government has posed on us? There's not enough teachers. Our school, Tunstall, has the highest population. We have eight hundred and forty-two students. I know that to be a fact. I looked it up today. Tunstall Middle School has five hundred and sixty-one students. There may be space, yes, but I promise you, there's not enough teachers, and there's certainly not enough bus drivers. Everything that you vote on tonight is of the utmost importance. We want you to understand that teamwork and time and data needs to be in your possession before these changes are made. I thank you for your time.
David Willis, Jr.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is David Willis, Jr., and I'm from the Tunstall District. And I had to start to stop the proposed codes page on Facebook because, to get people to know about what's going on, because nobody knew. I found out on the fifth of June that this was going to happen, the day before the last planning committee. Mr. Ingram had been advertising on Facebook to his people at that time that he was, that were going to do this and plan this, and they planned it all in secret, and didn't let anyone know about it until, right up till the day before the last planning committee. And still, as everyone else has said here, no one knows about it, except for the people in this room and the people that have signed petitions. I had to start petition myself, and then last time, when we come in here in August, on June the sixth, I brought in a petition with three hundred signatures from three stores that took three weeks to get. And those, and those three hundred people, that was when they found out about it, that's the first time they found out about it, heard about it, and they were angry. And they signed that petition because they didn't want that in this county. And then, three days ago, I took some petitions to other stores, to Mills Grocery and to Jones's Market and stuff like that, a few other places. And within three days, at Mills Grocery, within three days, Mills Grocery, right there at Tunstall High School, eighty-one people signed that petition, saying they do not want this. They do not want this in that county. And at Jones's, forty-seven people signed it within two days. That's not many people coming in their stores, you know, but it does at Mills's, but Jones's ain't a whole lot, but forty-seven people signed it in two days. And at Ricky's Market, twenty-two people signed it in two days. And it isn't like the people sitting at the stores saying, "Sign this, sign this." It's sitting over there somewhere where people have to look for it. So people have to go look for it, then they say, they have, then they read it and find out what's going on, and then they sign it. And that's the only people, and everybody that has seen the petition, no one has thrown it down and said, "I don't care about that." They all say, "Let me see that, let me sign that, because we don't want that in this county." And they talk about, and people talk about Vic Ingram here, he's the one pushing it, and everyone knows that, and we'll go get to that another time. But the thing is, just like Mr. Wood said, people have been calling him, trying to buy his property for a while now, and now he's finally figured it out. Because other people, like Mr. Ingram has already told people, and made a deal with them, told them, "It's, it's good. We're going to do this. We're going to do this." And those, and those investors have told other investors. And those investors are looking for property in this county, right now as we speak, just like they're trying to buy Mr. Wood's property. And I've heard, talked to other people that have big properties. They, they want their properties too. And when you change this code right here, everybody's going to be a suspect. Every big piece of property in this county is going to be a suspect for this. And if we want, and if Vic Ingram and everybody wants to talk about, "We have a housing problem," let them build twelve hundred to eighteen hundred houses on there. You don't have to put Danville in with it. You're talking about putting two hundred acres of developed land in Danville with two thousand homes on six hundred acres. Why do you have to have a town with it? We have places to go shopping, just like everyone else said. We don't need a food line, we don't need a hotel, and all this other stuff.
Sir, you need to wind it down. Your time has expired.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Frank Smith.
Good evening, everybody. Let me start by introducing myself. My name is Frank Smith. I'm a former veteran in the Tunstall District. I like to distinguish myself as, I don't like any development, because I'm a farmer. I would like to take a few minutes of your time to tell you about a critically endangered species whose habitat will be greatly reduced and who will someday be an extinct species in Pennsylvania County. That species is the American farmer. I'm one of these, less than one percent of the population, who produces food for the other ninety-nine percent who buy it, in a grocery store. And contrary to some people's point of view, food doesn't grow in the aisles of the store. It grows on the ever-decreasing farmland that is tended day after day by the forgotten farmer. The average age of a farmer has exceeded fifty-eight and is steadily climbing. The number-one barrier to new and beginning farmers is the access to land. This is increased exponentially by the thousands of acres put into solar panels, which have turned out not to be the great fields of gold some were promised. Then there is your residential development, and then the thousands of acres of farm and forest land turned into mega industrial parks, all in the name of the greater good and of economic development. Like I was told by certain individuals, farming is an old way of life. It is the past, and development is the way of the future. And hey, we buy local, we just don't buy from local farmers in Tunstall because they're not going to be there anymore. Then this Saman people said it is the developer's land to do with as they please. I agree. As they want land, do as you please. I was then prompted that they could put a hog farm in if they want. I'm fine with that. I enjoy bacon. I enjoy pork chops. I like a good barbecue sandwich. I feel like there's room in the county for everyone, except for the old outdated farmer. And even though farming is the largest industry in the state of Virginia and Pennsylvania County, it is the backbone that our county was founded on. And yes, some of those were even stinky pig farmers. Everyone says no one wants to be a farmer, and it is a dying profession. Well, I hate to tell you, you can't make it long without food, but you can live without an RPD. And back to my earlier point, the number-one obstacle for new and beginning farmers is access to land, which is made harder and harder with every acre taken out of production. I was also told that developers plan to stop with their small nineteen-hundred-house, five-hundred-plus-acre RPD, and that everyone needs a grocery store in their backyard, and old folks home to stuff mom and dad in, while we all cram into our condos with our ten-by-ten yards with shopping and community centers. I was also told that the same man who supports this RPD wouldn't want to live in that RPD. Isn't that funny? And that we also have two hundred openings in the Tunstall School District. Eight hundred-plus students, I just don't buy that. I was also informed that this would be the fourth RPD in Pennsylvania County. So then I asked, "Why do they need us to change our whole county's ordinances for one developer, so they can cram a few more people on every acre?" And I know this has nothing to do with the great casino, it's just a coincidence that this RPD ordinance needs changed right before the opening of the casino in the great D-Vegas. So I'm just a farmer, one of the few that feeds the many. All I do is tend cattle on just old undeveloped farmland, that if the powers that be have their way, will be something great someday, like a nice big RPD, complete with a nice big mega industrial, instead of just old dirt and grass.
Jason Hedman.
Thank you. I knew I should have eaten a cheeseburger before I come here, because now I'm hangry and I'm tired. All right. So my name is Jason Hedman. I live directly across from the proposed, well, it's not proposed, it's going to happen, development. I'm standing for you, not in, not a proposal of progress and change. I'm here because of progress and change. I came to the area because my parents moved here, when, when my dad opened up Columbia Forest Products here in Chatham and in Danville in the late nineties. I watched as the bypass was put in and took part of my parents' front yard on Oak Ridge Farms Road. It was bittersweet to lose the once beautiful home setting, but it was necessary for progress. And we even enjoyed having access, the access road in his front driveway, so we could go look at deer at night, rode up and down it. But it was bittersweet to lose it. And it was nice to drive quickly to Greensboro. I moved back to Stokesdale, or I moved to Stokesdale and worked in Greensboro, where my company, Oregon Systems, is headquartered. I moved back to the area in 2010 with Debbie Taylor, my wife, in a home we purchased, to live in the country, away from the cities, but close enough for me to commute and for Debbie to run her business that you all probably are very well aware of, that she owns. I mention all of this because I and many others aren't opposed to reasonable change for the good of our county. I say this because there was mention of, made of zoning changes necessary to allow Highway 58 to be built and for Smith Mountain Lake to exist. Both of these were very necessary for progress. One for travel, as did the bypass for 58 and for the bypass, and the other for adding to the power grid to support future growth with Smith Mountain Lake, which, by the way, is beautiful. It has been mentioned that zoning changes is necessary for growth due to a housing shortage, among other things. Many of the people against the zoning change aren't against that. As the zones, as the, as the zone stands, twelve hundred households can be built on that, and we've all been clear on that, we all know that. Twelve hundred houses, twelve hundred families is a significant number. What we are against is changing the zoning to maximize, maximize the profitability of the six hundred and fourteen-acre tract that will negatively affect, impact the area visually and infrastructurally, and remember, Smith Mountain Lake is beautiful, I said that. What we are against is opening the floodgates to this type of development. You guys have heard that multiple times from multiple people that stood up and said the same thing, and I didn't talk to half these people that said the same thing I'm saying. I quote from an email sent to the Community Development Director, Emily Ragsdale, who spoke here earlier, right? That was who was showing the stuff on the screens we couldn't read. "I am requesting clarification." Jane Kendrick sent and asked, "I am requesting clarification on KCA 23001. Would you clarify for myself and others, if the requested changes are approved, would that be a permanent change and apply to future RDS anywhere in the county?" Ms. Ragsdale responded, "If approved, the proposed changes would apply to any property zone RDP in the county." This proposal is more about wants and needs and less about change and progress. It really boils down to wrong and right. It's wrong to put the wants of a few over the needs of many. We have a few investors who want to develop their way, their way, and, and we have many saying, "We, the people, don't need you to develop it your way." There are codes in place to protect our rights while still giving-
Sir, you're going to have to start winding it down.
All right, vote no.
Your time expired.
Irvin Moss.
Irvin Moss, and West Stowards District is in the house. Ms. Spears, thank you for bringing up the clarification on the RPD stipulation for our area, because water and sewer is very available in most areas there. It concerns me greatly. I've lived there, well, let's see, sixty-six years now. I've seen a bypass cut right through my family farm that's been there over a hundred years. I know progress is, is needed, but progress of this magnitude, I don't, I don't understand. I have just one question. We ran into this at the RV park situation. Did the investors know the stipulations and the zoning before they bought the land? Or was it hidden- the land, or was it hidden and revealed after they purchased the land? They, in my opinion, they bought the land knowing full well what the zoning was already in effect and somehow were convinced that they could convince, convince you guys that their zoning could be changed to suit their needs. I just don't agree with that. I don't agree with somebody trying to change a, a community, a county that's been here for generations to walk in and think big money can change everything. That's just the way I feel. Thank you.
Josh Austin?
Welcome. Good evening, everyone. Everybody hear me? Am I close enough to the mic?
That's good. Thank you.
Members of the Board, we come to you tonight as a community and a county to ask that you not put the almighty dollar above the lives of people in our community and our county. I realize that part of this decision is based on how it may be financially beneficial to vote to approve the code changes and the rezoning. By approving these code changes, and we'll give you some numbers, you will put this area in the 11th spot of most highly-dense cities in the state of Virginia, based on 4,000 people. But we all know that 4,000 is a conservative number. So if you go up to 5,000, that makes you seventh on the list. If you go up to 6,000, it moves us up one more spot to six, the most highly-dense areas in the state of Virginia. Now, I know I'm not supposed to refer to this as a city and have been accused of lying because I did so. But if you search the definition of a city, you'll find one common factor: density. I hope y'all get the point. We're not against growth or having new neighbors, as has been said. We welcome the addition of housing, and according not to just the Board or the developers, but every person that is in favor of the current plan is the main concern because we have a housing shortage. Sorry, y'all. I lost my place. There we go. And by approving these items tonight, we'll solve the problem of housing. Now, let's go back to something I just said. We welcome housing, just not as the current plans show. And we appreciate the idea of having the commercial aspects, but no one that lives out here made the decision to live here because we hoped that one day there would be a grocery store or a hotel. We don't mind making the ride to the current cities to get what we need, but it's obvious this decision tonight is, is not just about housing. Because if it, if it was, then there would be less focus on RPD changes and more focus on just rezoning for houses. But as it stand, but as has been said, we don't have to rezone to add housing. The numbers were given to us earlier. I refined them just a little bit more. With the changes that have come about, there are 34 acres that have been taken off, we're now down to 1,228 houses as it's zoned currently. That's based on the 580 acres that we're down to now. So I don't want to get accused of spraying lies again. The number is actually 1,160 because of the change. The 1,228 was based on the, the 584. So Mr. Lawrence is sitting in the, in the wings right now waiting for your approval to change these so he can add his back because he didn't like the 100-foot boards. Well, thank y'all for adding that 100-foot buffer to every RPD now because now we know that the greers are protected. They can't have driveways on both sides of their house.
Sir, you're going to have to start winding it down. Your time has done expired.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So I say build it. Build it on the current codes. But I think you will find out real quick that it's less about housing and more about how much we can make. So since we have been the one, so since we have been the ones telling lies the whole time, why don't those that have been sugarcoating this, this be totally honest? It's not all rainbows and sunshine, as some would have us believe. Just remember, $3 million doesn't go very far when it comes time to add the expenses. Thank you.
Heather Watlington?
Welcome.
Hello. My name is Heather Watlington, and I'm actually in the Westover District, but I have a business in the Tunstall District. So, gosh, it's been a crazy summer since we found out about this thing in May. We've heard about the possible development of a city in our district, and we fought against it. We've prayed, we've cried, and even laughed a little as we've made new friends with our neighbors. I cannot tell you how many nights I've just rode through the county roads and admired the beauty of it all and what an absolutely beautiful county we live in. While we know we need development, that things must change and grow, it's up to you guys, the elected officials, to make the decision on what that will look like. It's a little scary to think about seven people that hold the fate of so many. Yes, people are a little scared, they're a little nervous, and they're a little upset, but only want what is best for this county as a whole. We would like to see developments come in that will blend well into our county and our communities. Mount Cross Road and 41 are great examples of smaller developments with houses on one-to-two-acre lots where their children can still get outside and play in the yard but can have friends, be friends with the people next door. You, our Board of Supervisors, have the only say-so as to what these new developments will look like. You, our Board of Supervisors, have the final say-so on what our beautiful county will look like. During the last few months, we've learned a lot about you guys, our Board of Supervisors, not in just talking to you personally and emailing and calling back and forth, but as you all know, my family and my business have been investigated by one of you, and you know who you are. It's ridiculous. This was not done as his due diligence, but was done after I started raising my voice against the development. We have a right as law-abiding citizens to voice our concerns without someone trying to dig up dirt to shut us up. We have the right to voice- We have the right to voice our concerns when it will affect us, our families, our businesses, and our neighbors. We have the right to ask you to say no to these code changes and say no to this high-density development. We also have found out that most of our supervisors don't get along, and you guys are a divided board. It is very hard to trust you guys to make such big decisions when you can't get along, just constantly stabbing each other in the back, calling each other out on social media and everywhere else. But anyway, we have also found out, we're hoping and praying, I'm just going to put that aside, we are hoping and praying that you can all put your differences aside and do what's best for us, your constituents, the ones that voted you into office to start with, and for those that will be moving here. Please don't let your personal feelings for one another affect how you vote tonight. Please do your job that you were elected to do. Search your heart and have 100% peace about your vote before pushing that button. You have all, even the ones who have been doing the investigating, been in our prayers for months now. We have faith that you're going to make the right decision here tonight, and God bless you all.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. At 9:23, I close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the attached provisions to PCC 3535 295, 35296, 35298, 35301, and 35303 as presented.
All right. Mr. Ingram, thank you. Got a motion? A second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Warren. Any more discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm supporting the motion because for the past, from the time I started running, I was interested in economic development, education, and the progress of this county. I've sat by and watched, and we've affected a lot of things. We've done some really good economic development over the last seven-plus years. A lot of money's been spent out at Berry Hill. But unless we're willing to embrace some changes, we're going to continue to lose our most valuable asset. We got a great school division, and we produce talented kids. But we lose most of them because we don't have opportunities for them here. And the only way we're going to ever have the opportunities to retain those assets are to be willing to make changes. I have wrestled with this decision. I voted last month to kick it down the road another month. I've heard from many of you all. You've got valid points. That's why I went to staff this afternoon and tried to get us to a point where, you know, we got 100-foot setbacks and we got some other things made that make it more difficult for someone to be RPD. But for me not to support these changes, I would basically be the biggest hypocrite that's ever sat in this chair. From the time I started running, that's what I said. I've listened to the constituents. I've talked to, one of you all mentioned, "Have you talked to the folks in your district?" Yes, I surely have. And it's, you're right in another assumption. I'm sure a lot of them that's talked to me have been supportive of this. That probably wouldn't be supportive if it was happening next door. So I get all of it. I truly get all of it. And, you know, I think we're trying to do the best we can to make this situation as good as we possibly can and still meet the needs of everyone. And we, not everybody's going to be happy. I mean, you know, I'm going to leave tonight, and I'm not going to be happy regardless of the outcome of the vote. Because I know that there's going to be good people, that there is good people on both sides. So one side's going to be happy, a little happy, and one side's going to be a little unhappy. I made the comment to some of my colleagues that the only way we probably come close to getting this thing right is if, if both, both sides leave a little bit unhappy. And that's just, that's just the, the nature of the situation we have. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Mr. Skiers?
Yeah, I just want to say that I think we're getting ready to go into an experiment, and Agston's going to be that lab, and we're going to find out how good or how bad this is actually for that community. I personally have a lot of reservations about these code changes because it will affect my district as well down the road. And one thing that people haven't talked about tonight is the school district. Tunstall High, I called the office today, and they said they had a pupil, pupil population of 883. This development's supposed to bring in 900 more students. Where are they going? So-
There you go. It opens the door, I think.
The best, the best-case scenario is some of the people in Tunstall's going to get redistricted somewhere else because we're not building a school, a new high school or new any school anytime soon. So for me, this, I, I feel the pain that you guys are going through, and I've always taken that into consideration on anything I've done. And I've done that for the last eight years, and that won't change. If I've got the input from the citizens, especially the way you guys have come together, I try, try to listen, and I try to pay attention. I know the changes we've made that will take effect next month will make this RPD code a lot better, but it's still, if you look up smart growth, if you look that term up, this whole thing in density and everything, it, it all falls under smart growth, and I think we can do growth better, a smarter way, that does not affect you guys negatively and still gets the housing issue accomplished. I'm not against building houses. I just think we got a better way of doing it. So to say all that, I'm going to vote against these changes. I may be the only one to do it.
Mr. Dalton?
Mr. Ingram, go ahead. Comment.
Mr. Dalton?
Political posture at its finest.
Mr. Chairman.
You know, I tend to have faith in people.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ingram.
Particularly our school superintendent. And when he came to one of the six meetings that we held, and some of you didn't come to any of them, and some-
Get them in order. Can't have the outbursts. Have them move.
No outbursts. No outbursts. Because you didn't know is not my fault. Because- Because the very people in here that's wearing the same shirt knew about it. But anyway, let me get past that. Our school superintendent clearly said that right now Tunstall High School has 264 openings, Tunstall Middle 250, Stony Mill 250, Union Hall 178, and Brazel Elementary 140. So remember, this is not going to happen next weekend. This is a 10-year growth process. How many children will be a byproduct of this project? Nobody really knows. The numbers, the speculation, the innuendos, I hear you, but there's no factual proof in that. So when our superintendent says, "Hey, we can handle this many students right now," I tend to believe him. When our sheriff, when our sheriff in the state police say, "We will have the manpower to take care of problems," when our-
Got to keep control, Chairman.
Out of order. No outbursts. This ain't good, though. Ma'am. Take her out. Ma'am, you're going to have to settle down or leave. Mr. Kendler, remove him from the, ma'am, you're going to have to leave. You're disturbing our meeting, ma'am. I'm sorry.
I forgot what I was going to say. Any more? But, um- But, um...
All right, Mr. Ingram, are you finished, sir, or do you have anything else?
No, I did have a couple more things. I just want to simply say that we have listened. I've lived here my whole life except for four years. And there's a lot of people in this audience, and there's several wearing these shirts that don't even live in that district. They don't live near the proposed project. But what I was going to say on a positive note is that I appreciate you willing to put on that shirt and willing to come here to stand up and represent what you believe is right. But please understand that this was not a haphazard decision that we just decided to do overnight. It was a long, drawn-out, methodical process. I became aware of it last December, and this notebook is my due diligence. I don't need to investigate anybody. That was a slanderous comment because I already know who you are. So, point being, is please don't make unwarranted slanderous comments just to make a point. You say you're not against housing, but what are you for? You realize that as the property is zoned out, these gentlemen could build 1,200 houses. So what would you say then?
All right.
Or to have it rezoned R1, it would kick it up to 2,400. So then, with the changes, it's much less than it was. But I took a picture of a banner just this morning at the Mexican restaurant, 2,000-plus houses. Now, you know that's not true. You know that's not true. So this is the kind of thing that upsets me, is that we have been as honest and transparent. We have done everything that the state code said to do. We have held six community meetings. The last one, I had 13 representatives of the areas of concern that you asked about. And other than, I don't know what more we could have done because none of what I just said was required. We went above and beyond. Every supervisor was invited to come to the meetings. Only one showed up. But we had good meetings. And I will tell you that there's a lot of people that left those meetings with a change of mind and a change of heart. And I'll address that later on, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ings, I'm sorry.
I just want to address, when he mentioned the code amendments, I thought I heard 303, and it states 305. For making the motion. It's not 303, it's 305.
Do you want to make your correction, Mr. Ingram?
I'm looking at 35301 and 35305 is presented.
305?
Is presented. That's what is here.
Okay, is that good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Well, Mr. Tucker?
Mr. Chairman, first off, I want to express my gratitude for all of the constituents coming out tonight. This is democracy in action. But I think, as I said last month, you know, there's some middle ground. There have been concessions made by the developers. There have been concessions made by the board. We certainly hear you and whomever said that you all blew us up this past weekend was correct. And I have tried to take all of the calls, and I've tried to respond to all emails. And, you know, there is a Roman god that they typically worship that was on the coin. His name was Janus. And he faced in both different directions, so he was able to see both sides of the issue. And I see both sides of the issue, but I also serve on the Rifa board. In discussions yesterday in the meeting, I had mentioned to them that it's almost like we're wasting our time when we take a look at regional economic development. And part of that regional economic development has to include infrastructure. It has to include housing, schooling. Those issues have to be covered. But the problem is, I think everyone in this room really wants the best for this county. And part of that is the fact that we want to land a great company that will provide the type of jobs, employment, that we would be proud of, that our children can maybe stay in this area, our best and our brightest. They're making the mass exodus out of the county once they complete high school. They go to college. They don't come back because we cannot, at this point, provide the jobs for their particular fields. So, in my humble opinion, there is such a thing as coexisting. And Lord knows, I understand your passion. I get it. But at the same time, we have to coexist, and we have to create opportunities within the county. And for those reasons, I preferfully considered it. And I'm going to support the motion because I think that we have to lay the groundwork regionally if we're going to lift this county economically. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. One more comment, Mr. Dudley.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen that come out this evening, I want to thank you, each one of you that did come up and speak yesterday. Got a lot of phone calls. I've gotten a lot of phone calls in the last week. I've done my best. There's probably a dozen of you in the audience right now that I spoke to. And we established some relationships, and we talked. You know, this is about as tough a vote as we've had. I'm just being straight up and honest. I remember when Mountain Valley Pipeline come through. I remember when the solar farms come through. They were tough. But this is really a tough one because we need, we need something at Berry Hill, but we need our people also in Tunstall. And I'm not a fan, I am a fan of industrial development. I am not a fan of being able to spit and hit my neighbor's house. I'm just going to say it. I don't like the density. And some of the, you know, the code changes. But I will say this, and ladies and gentlemen, if you'll just hold your boos or applause, whatever, this developer has made quite the concessions moving from 30-foot to 100-foot and basically giving us something to go on, maybe if we look at another. There's a lot of things that they've done, and they've been very cordial and made concessions. And I really appreciate that. The vote is difficult. I love this county. I live on 12 acres. It would be tough to me to look outside and see my neighbor or shake hands through the window. I can't do that. I mean, I'm just 12 acres, and that's it. I'm not a big farm. So it's a back and forth. I'm just being straight up and honest as I know. The density, I really, absolutely do not like. But I want to thank everybody that did come up. Some of you spoke twice. You did very well. And I just appreciate you all coming. Quite a few speakers that really highlighted. I enjoyed the farmer that got up and, folks are after you and after your place. And that's tough. So, but anyway, I'm, I just want to thank everybody for being here and coming out and just doing what you did tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Any more comments? Any more comments from anybody?
Anyways.
I'd just like to say again, I thank everybody for coming out. I know you just took up a lot of your time. A lot of you got up and spoke twice. But you've been a good audience. I appreciate that. I mean, I know some people got a little loud, but I understand. And again, as Mr. Dudley just said, this is a very, very tough issue. Very tough. I'm a farmer. I come from a farm. I know what G and H means. That's how early I started. And I don't want to affect the farmland. But you look at what this is, you can get the same or maybe double the houses here and not take up so much of the farmland. I mean, I look at that as being a plus. But I do hear everybody's concerns of having the high density also. But again, I appreciate everybody coming, all of your comments. And I have listened. But we have to make a tough decision. But again, thank you. No more discussion, gentlemen? All right, we ready to cast our vote?
Yes. You want to please everybody, you can.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Would you like to take a quick recess before we proceed with the rezoning case?
Yes, I would. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, recess. Yeah, about five minutes, and we'll be fine. Thank you. Yes, recess. Yeah, about five minutes and we'll be fine. Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you. Y'all have any questions? Kevin?
I think Mr. Warren needs his.
I got it.
I'll tell you.
Yes, sir.
Jelly. I'm gonna start calling him jellyfish.
No, 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 no.
I'm gonna call him jellyfish. Get him out of my pocket.
What's that? You suck. That is just mean.
Don't talk to me about each other because I don't know. You don't know.
You're wrong.
No, you don't.
I absolutely didn't.
You do not. You do not. You do not.
I'm wrong, Joey Foster here tonight to get some back. No, I'm just kidding.
You don't know.
Who's gonna call Pizza Hut?
Hey, Jelly, do you like, do you like?
Ladies and gentlemen.
Are you hitting her with it too? You are sick.
The board will now reconvene at 10:03.
You said earlier you were supportive.
Moving to item 10B. Rezoning public hearings pursuant to Article 5, Division 6 of the Pennsylvania County Zoning Ordinance. The Board of Supervisors have been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of said ordinance. In accomplishing this important task, the Board is responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general public welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. The Board must ensure that all of its decisions and regulations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and the best interests of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its prosperity. Case 1R-23-18. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R-23-018, Rudson Companies Incorporated has petitioned to rezone 3.15 acres located on State Road 29, US Highway 29, in the Westover Election District from M1 Industrial District Light Industry to B2 Business District General to allow for a retail business. On July 6, 2023, the Planning Commission recommended by a seven to zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to B2, all uses listed under Section 35-365 are permitted. The staff, for some reason, closed the board packet. Mr. Chairman, a representative from Rudson Companies Incorporated is here to represent the petition.
All right, thank you. At 10:05, open the public hearing. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Attorney Kerry Hutcherson. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Rudson Companies, Inc. And I know you'll have a few more things on your agenda, so I'll make this as short and sweet as I can. As Ms. Ragsdale mentioned, both the staff and the Planning Commission have recommended approval of this case. It's pretty simple. Rudson Companies has 3.15 acres of the property located at 201 Lerner Lane under contract to purchase, to downzone from industrial zoning to B2 commercial zoning for a general retail store. And again, Planning Commission and the staff recommended approval because not only is this proposed rezoning consistent with the comprehensive plan's recommendations, it's also within the Blair's Growth District where growth and development of this kind is recommended. It's also within an economic development corridor for the county, and it's in a designated enterprise zone that the Commonwealth of Virginia has designated. So all signs point to this site for commercial use. I'm just flipping through these slides quickly. They're wearing your packet, I believe. Here's a photo of the location. There's currently an industrial intersection here at US 29 Business and Lerner Lane. And the 3.15 acre site that we're looking to develop is at that corner there. We've been working closely with the VDOT staff to make sure that the approved entrance, which I'll show you here in just a second. This is just some examples of current development that's already existing in the area. It's already industrial and commercial in this area. And there's a little bit of residential over on the western side of US 29. We're hoping that this downzoning from industrial to commercial will help create a more gradual transition of land uses in the area. This is a survey of the property, the 3.15 acres. And you see the entrance proposed is coming in off of Lerner Lane, which will help get traffic off of US 29 and safely route it right into the store's parking lot and back out onto US 29. That's all been supported by VDOT, and we are looking to move forward with this rezoning and the site plan just as soon as possible. If you have any questions for me, I've got representatives from Rudson Companies here as well as our civil engineer. And without further ado, I respectfully request your approval of this case. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Y'all have any questions? Kevin?
I think Mr. Warren needs his.
I got it.
I'll tell you issue. I don't think we have any question. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else signed up, Ms. McCloskey?
No, sir.
Okay. 10:08, I close the public hearing, and the pleasure will be Mr. Saff.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't choose which one.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in the case of R-23-018, I make the recommendation that we rezon from M1 Industrial District Light Industry to B2 Business District General, the 3.15 acres.
Thank you, Ms. Saff. Second, Ms. England. Thank you, sir. Any discussion on the motion? If not, we're ready to vote. Motion carries. Zoning has been, has been rezoned. Thank you, sir. Moving to number two in case R-23-019. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R-23-019, Neil Waltman has petitioned to rezone 2.99 acres located on State Road 729, Kentuck Road, in the Dan River Election District from A1 Agricultural District to R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to allow the property to be consolidated with an adjacent parcel zoned to R1. On July 6, 2023, the Planning Commission recommended by a seven to zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to R1, all uses listed under Section 35-222 are permitted. The staff, for some reason, closed the board packet. Mr. Chairman Neil Waltman is here to represent the petition.
At 10:10, I open the public hearing. Welcome, sir. Still fine?
Simple request, family transference of land, 2.99 acres from my mother and father-in-law to me. Directly decided we're gonna combine it with my present plot, which is R1, and the land in question is zoned to A1. So at the end, it will be combined to make approximately four acres of R1 on the new plot. Pretty much straightforward.
All right. Any questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone else signed up, Ms. McCloskey?
No, sir.
10:10, I close the public hearing. Ms. Eames, as pleasure is yours.
Okay, I make a motion to accept the public hearing case number R23-019 for Neil Waltman, rezoning from A1 Agriculture District to R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision on 729 in the Dan River District for the 2.99 acres.
Thank you, Ms. Eames. Got a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Any discussion on the motion? If not, we're ready to cast our vote. Passes seven to zip, zero. Case has been rezoned. Moving to case R23-020. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R-23-020, Emmanuel Pentecostal Holiness Church has petitioned to rezone 0.859 acres located on State Road 836, White Oak Circle, in the Tonsil Election District from A1 Agricultural District to R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to allow the property to be consolidated with an adjacent parcel zoned to R1. On July 6, 2023, the Planning Commission recommended by a seven to zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to R1, all uses listed under Section 35-222 are permitted. The staff, for some reason, closed the board packet. Mr. Chairman Gerald Kelly will be representing the petition.
Thank you. At 10:12, open the public hearing.
We don't have anyone, sir.
Is Mr. Kelly speaking?
Yep, go ahead.
All right, go ahead.
I surely don't have to, sir.
Do I need to close the public hearing before he comment?
Nope, he's fine.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, sir.
I just put, get it rezoned to put a shelter off of the back of our fellowship hall. We're gonna try to feed some of these hungry people in the area. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. At 10:13, I close the public hearing. Ms. England, pleasure is yours.
Yes, sir. Pastor, good to see you, and appreciate that request. In case R23-020, I make a motion approving the rezoning of 0.859 acres from A1 Agricultural District to R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to allow property lines to be adjusted.
Second. Got a second by Mr. Warren. Thank you. Any discussion? If not, we're ready to vote, gentlemen? All right, motion carries. Case has been rezoned. Moving to four, case R23-016. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R-23-016, Southside Investing LLC has petitioned to rezone 11 parcels totaling 579.72 acres located on US Highway 58, Martinsville Highway, State Road 851, Peach Orchard Road, and Sugar Tree Lane in the Tonsil Election District from A1 Agricultural District to RPD Residential Plan Unit Development District to allow for mixed-use development to include commercial and residential uses. Once the property is rezoned to R1, all uses listed under Section 35-222 are permitted. Once the property is rezoned to RPD, all uses listed under Section 35-294 are permitted. The staff some reason closed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman Tom Gallagher with Southside Investing LLC is here to represent the petition.
At 10:14, I open the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, members of board, thank you. I also want to thank all of the residents, those that I've met before and those that I haven't met. As someone said earlier, this is democracy in action. And I'm going to be, I'm going to be very brief, given the hour and the comments and a lot of stuff that's already been raised. Southside Investing, which is made up of four partners, including two folks, Mr. Curtis and Mr. Harris, who grew up in the area. We came forward with this project in order to meet the housing demand. That was what attracted us to this, and we saw the opportunity. Not only the current housing deficit that needs to be addressed, but also hopefully, and we think it's not a question of if, but when, housing for future employees at the mega site. The biggest thing I would say is, and it goes back to Ms. Jones earlier, who received the recognition, is this is about young people. And I think a lot of what this board's looking at and looking to do is to create opportunities for young people for jobs and for housing. We did hold six different meetings. I have to thank Mr. Ingram for all of his assistance. And at the same time, people need to understand, and other board members did the same, but you know, the encouragement that we received to make sure that we listen to the community. And as part of those meetings and as part of the concessions and the 100-foot setback, which appears that that's going to become part of the RPD, so I guess that was a good thing in terms of laying the groundwork. We also included a 30-foot tree save and a vegetated buffer. So, whereas some people said we weren't listening, at the end of the day, we were trying to listen, we were listening, and I think we did our best to make some concessions to address the concerns. This project in and of itself will not solve the housing needs in the county. And as I've said to numerous folks, I understand. I understand the change, and it is transformative. I think it's part of what's been happening for years here. And I think to a large degree, a lot of folks that are now becoming aware, not only with respect to our project, but what the county's trying to do in terms of creating opportunity. This is, this was an outcome that was going to happen in terms of the housing needs. This is a 10-year-plus project. We've got 12 to 18 months in front of us if we are successful in getting approved just from a permitting standpoint. And we've also, we've submitted voluntarily the proffers, which, you know, address various things, including the setbacks I referenced, traffic impact analysis, which we're committed to doing, which is underway. The other questions that came up were with respect to security, and we recognize the importance of public safety, and we've committed to, you know, providing across the county a two-acre site within the project for emergency service facilities. And finally, the other part that I would reference is that the water and sewer and the costs associated with that, as well as the transportation improvements. Right now, we don't know the exact number until we continue to work with Public Works, the city, and Mr. Adcock. But at the end of the day, we've committed within the proffers also be responsible for the costs associated with connecting to the sewer and providing the sewer capacity that will be needed to serve our property. So again, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I do want to thank the residents again, the board, Mr. Ingram, and I'll leave it there.
Any questions, Mr. Gallagher? We good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
Welcome, Mr. Fawcett.
Thank you so much, Chairman Dalton. I come to you as Chair of the Pennsylvania County Industrial Development Authority, and I'm joined by our Vice Chair, John Daniel. So the Pennsylvania County Industrial Development Authority in its Wednesday, July 19, 2023 meeting, presented and adopted this following resolution. Whereas the Axton Housing Development will provide additional housing options for both current and new residents, and as such would be a great asset to this community. Whereas Pennsylvania County's Continuing Economic Development Success Plan must include housing solutions, which provide a high quality of life for all persons. And whereas the location of the Axton Housing Development is ideal with direct access to Route 58, while also in close proximity to the Southern Virginia mega site at Berry Hill, thus directly supporting economic development. And whereas Pennsylvania County and the region continues to grow and develop, the demonstrated need for housing and supporting quality of life services is more essential, and this multi-use development with its 1,900 housing units plus retail stores addresses this dire need. And whereas the development requires the rezoning of the property to Residential Plan Unit Development District by you, the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, and whereas this application has been made to rezone the property, which was unanimously recommended for approval by the Pennsylvania County Planning Commission during its meeting on June 6 of this year, and which awaits your action this evening. Whereas the Pennsylvania County Industrial Development Authority strongly believes this project will benefit Pennsylvania County's citizenry and tax base for all the aforementioned reasons, now therefore be it resolved that the Pennsylvania County Industrial Development Authority fully supports the property rezoning for the Axton Housing Project, given under my hand this 19th day of July, 2023. Dr. Joey Fawcett, Chair. John Daniel, Vice Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fawcett.
All right, Mr. Chairman. County staff has worked together to provide an accommodation regarding ADA for Ms. Deborah McCag.
Yes.
So Holly Kazee is going to read her statement for her.
Okay, that'll be fine. Welcome, Ms. Kazee. Thank you for doing that.
No problem. It says, "I am not in favor of high density. I moved to Loudoun County in 1984 while it was rural, just like it is here, and lived there for 23 years before I moved to Danville in 2007. As of 2020, Loudoun County has a total of 4,657 subdivisions. When I lived there during that time of 1984 to 2007, on an average, 50-plus subdivisions was built per year. I was there and watched all these developments, new roads, new traffic lights, new schools, firehouses, police stations built, et cetera. The cost of living became so unbearable that I sold my house in 2007 because I did not like paying $5,000 in real estate taxes per year on a 10,000-square-foot lot. My sister lives in Long Island, New York. Her house on a half acre is, her taxes are $20,000 per year. Many people are moving out of New York, California, and other states with higher taxes. The cost for low to medium density is doable. There are many ways to save the cost of building. Majority of people who live, who moved to Loudoun are upper-middle class and well-to-do people. In Loudoun County in 1984, the median income was $18,700 per year, and the 2020 median income was $147,111 per year. Pennsylvania County median income is $52,000. Developers' jobs is to build high-density subdivision at lower cost and to pass on the county to take over the burden to maintain roads, utilities, schools, public service with new taxes. There are pros and cons to high-density developments. According to an article by Lead Developer, "Some of the benefits of high-density housing include land use efficiency, a wide range of sizes and pricing, lower level to sophistication required, a larger market, and improved control." However, there are also risks associated with high-density residential development, such as overbuilding exposure, higher management responsibilities, and increased demands for finance. Danville has several vacant lots where houses are torn down and is vacant and available for purchase to build new houses. Please keep future subdivisions low to medium density with sensible development and keep the county rural. Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I believe we also have a statement from Mr. Steve Heatherly. Do you have that to read, Mr. Dalton or Mr. Ingram?
I do. May I read it now?
Yes, sir.
Well, also, I had some notes from a local dentist, but anyway. Steve Heatherly, who is the CEO of SOVA, sent me this email, and he wanted me to highlight some points that he was making in support of this project. And I want to ask you to think about the number of times that you've needed to go to the doctor or to the hospital, and that long extended wait because they didn't have staff, they didn't have doctors to get to you as quick as you needed to be seen. And diversion at our hospitals has been cut down dramatically, but there's still a wait time. So Steve Heatherly, on behalf of SOVA, felt it so important to let people know the importance of a project such as this. And these were his points. Number one, affordable transition housing is a significant need in this community and can be a rate-limiting factor for young professionals to work, live, and play here. What he's talking about is young doctors being able to come here and make a living in the process of trying to find a decent place to live and recreation for their children and their family. At SOVA, we have 45 to 60 residents. These are doctors who are with us for three years, all of whom are looking for housing options. Every year, we have 40 to 35 third- and fourth-year medical students who are with us between three and 10 months, who are looking for flexible housing options. In 2022, we hired 18 of 20 DCC nursing graduates. We have 20 imaging students in each class at our School of Health Professionals, most of whom reside in this area. Each year, we are hiring dozens of young professionals who are starting their careers, many of them who will be looking for affordable transition housing. Last year was approximately 80 of them. Projects like this are a critical part of a thriving community that wants to be attracted to young professional workforce. We want these individuals to not only work in our community, but to live in our community. And number eight, SOVA sees this as a critical need and one that would aid in the recruitment of the next generation of healthcare workers. And I can't tell you again how important that is. A very prominent dentist called me Sunday, and I didn't get approval to really, to release his name, but their practice spends thousands and thousands of dollars every year to recruit good dentists. And think about this, the time that you have called to get a dental appointment, and there was a long delay because they don't have enough dentists and hygienists to see you as quick as you need to be seen. So that dentist is, I wish I could give you his name, you'd say, wow, that's cool. But anyway, he is in total support of this project as well. And so do remember that where the project is located, these young professionals, these young doctors, will be in between Danville and Martinsville, which will benefit so many people. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Ingram.
Kenneth Wood.
Kenneth Wood. Welcome, Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Chairman. My name is Kenneth Wood. I've been a lifelong resident here at Pennsylvania County. I live in the Tunstall District. I'd like to thank all of y'all for the opportunity to be able to speak tonight. I've been to some of the meetings, the proposed changes of the Tunstall area, but me, myself personally, I haven't talked with anyone that is for the proposed changes unless they have something to gain from the 6,000 people living on one tract of land. I've been a farmer all my life, Clearview Farms, in an area that's very close to Tunstall High School. My family farmed tobacco, dairy, and now forestry and beef cattle. I have farmed my entire life and also worked for 32 years, public work. Doing this allowed me to love and cherish the country way of life that we here in the county love so much. I have watched our rural area build up with lots of houses over the last 50 years here in the Tunstall area. I have seen change. My address changed three times while I was living in the same residence, so I understand change. This has nothing to do with the fear of change. This is about preserving our country and rural way of living. I have sold land for houses in the past and have lots for sale now. That's all a part of growth in our part of the county. Steady growth is understandable and is needed to sustain a viable county. This project would put 10% of the county's population on one tract that's roughly a square mile. Our county has almost 1,000 square miles, so putting 10% of the population in one small area is not what the people of Pennsylvania County want to see. This county is a conservative county. We have a lot of love for the land and the country way of life, not compacted, high-density type housing. Ask yourself, who in the county would be okay with 6,000 people living beside them? Mostly no one. Please protect us from congested lands and the danger that comes along with high-density populations, not to mention the infrastructure, tax implications, and the redistricting of schools that this could bring. I ask the board to please think about the bylaws. You should protect the citizens of Pennsylvania County from overcrowding of land and undue density of population while trying to preserve farm and forest land throughout the county. I will say that some representatives in the district are out of touch with the bylaws and the people that elected them. One is putting his own visions and wants ahead of the will of the people. The will of the people should always be cherished and never compromised. Please, don't destroy what we have in our county by opening the door for high-density housing. Please set a tone for this county is not for sale to compacted housing with high-density populations. Please vote no. Thank you.
I have a lot to say. Surprise. So I do thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Put that mic down a little bit, if you don't mind, please. Thank you.
Okay. I have a lot to say, and I hope you don't mind, and I'm certain, Chair, that I will probably go over, but I'll try to talk as fast as I can.
Okay.
Y'all listen real fast, maybe. That's what I used to tell my students, but seriously, first off, one area does not need to fill the housing needs of an entire region. All right, let's just get that straight right off the top. That's what we're saying. A couple of things. Economic development is needed in the county. It's needed everywhere. True. Housing will have to follow. True. Okay? So let's talk about the elephant in the room. We are wasting government time in the form of y'all having to listen to us, us having to call you, text you, email, smoke signal you, whatever the case may be. All right, why? Because this issue, this rezoning issue should never have even been brought before you. Why? Simple. This project is trying to go in an area that is zoned agricultural, period. That's it. If anyone wants RPD and high density, move it to an area that is more appropriate. I noticed the first gentleman, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the complex he was with over there on 29, near Lerner Road. He's not making a huge jump. This is from Section 1 to Section 7 in our zoning ordinances. That's a big, huge jump. So that's one thing, you're wasting our time. I want to correct an inaccuracy that was reported. A 15-minute city is not a mythical term. This is a term regularly used in the world of urban development. Urban, not rural development. The developer is seeking to build this 15-minute city in an area that is zoned agricultural, period. Agricultural is defined as cultivating soil, growing crops, raising livestock, the preparation of plant animal products for people to use, and the distribution to markets, as your farmers here have already said. Without them, we're all up a creek. Agriculture provides most of the world's food and fabrics. Cotton, wool, leather are all agricultural. And contrary to an error reported, this land is not being used for agriculture because all it has growing on it is trees. Trees are agriculture. We need that for our environment. I mean, I'm not a science major, but... I mean, I'm not a science major, but I think we still need the trees, clean the air, et cetera. So that's another thing that we missed out on. This is a long-drawn-out practice. That was stated. Became aware of it last December. We became aware of it the end of May, Memorial Day weekend. You want to know why people weren't at a lot of those meetings? They didn't know about it. They were planning for graduation and to school, the beginning of summer. It's hard to go somewhere when you don't know about it. We just ran into one of Supervisor Ingram's neighbors who didn't know about it until yesterday. She lives down the road from him. Okay, now, let's get real. How many people know about this? The other thing is, how close do you have to live to the development to understand what we are saying? Mrs. Bennett and I were taken to task in the newspaper because we don't live right at the development. I live three miles. I think she lives four, whatever. Really? Really? So we're going to split hairs? So I guess the further away you get from it, it's okay. That's not the way life works. We're supposed to take care of our neighbors. We are supposed to look out for them, the last time I checked.
Ma'am, can you start to wind it down?
I promise, yes. I promise.
You're expiring your time.
Takes me a while to crank up and wind down. Where's the research document and the millions of dollars, Mr. Ingram? How is that calculated? Okay? Because I hear that, and as an education major, I was always taught at Everett University, you can skew research to say whatever you want it to say. Period. So where is that coming from? We don't know. The education stats, I think what was missing is this. In the educational setting, that's what Mrs. Bennett was saying, you can have room for more students in a school, but the Department of Education says in an English class, you can only put twenty-two students in that class. Period. So if you have more students in the school who need English and you don't have enough teachers, you can have space. Those kids can go sit on the floor. They're not going to get their education. That's a big deal, last time I checked. So that is a problem. Give me just another minute, please. I beg. I beg. Why isn't the county population increasing? And I've heard about that for a long time. Lots of reasons are flippantly given. The young people are leaving because they can't find jobs. That's a subjective opinion. No stats for that. They can't find housing. Again, an opinion statement. Has the public heard any county leader say this? And this is fact. It's on the United States Census Government website. We are not the only municipality that is losing population. Has anyone, have you heard or has anyone told you that? Roanoke, Richmond, Norfolk, Virginia Beach, Portsmouth, Newport News, Alexandria, Virginia, are all experiencing a decline in population. Give me one second.
I didn't give you two minutes. You're not being respectful for the next one.
Okay, I'm sorry. So go back to economic development. We've heard that for years that Berry Hill is coming, and, you know, we anticipate that. But now we're being told that businesses won't come unless there's houses. That's really not practical. Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Welcome, Mr. Jennings.
Good evening, Board. That's a hard one to follow. At any rate, what is right is not always popular, and what is popular is not always right. In this situation, there, it may be extreme in many people's view, but when you start looking at the statistics of this county and where we're headed in the next twenty years, I believe this is a very much needed step. When you have approximately three to one over sixty versus thirty, we're headed headfirst into a massive tax shortfall if we don't do something to this nature. Normal attrition will certainly erode in our tax base. And you have to ask yourself, what do these taxes support? Not just our schools, not just our roads and communities. Think about the farmers that have the tax incentives that offer them the ability to own massive tracts of land which are supported by our tax intake. If we don't have the tax intake to do that, we certainly cannot continue to do with those programs, which they very much need. This growth not only presents opportunity for our children and our stability for our county, this is something that we're going to have to do in order to attract new opportunities. We've made too many investments into the mega site and things of that nature to just walk away. Not only that, voting down a rezoning or code change that would benefit this in a manner that's, as they say, consistent with the long-term plan of the region, you send a signal that we don't want investment or we don't want new businesses in this community. Businesses are the backbone of what we do. Small businesses especially, small farms, medium farms, all of the agriculture, all of the economic driving forces that we see in our county that make it great. This is what allows our people to live here and pay their bills. So I urge you to support this zoning because I believe it's going to be beneficial to our county and essential to the solvency of our local government. Thank you, and I pray for every one of you for the evening you had.
Thank you, sir.
Kim Greer.
I'm sorry, I don't have much. I just jotted down some thoughts that I had. But one thing that I have always wondered is, all we've ever heard is that this development is due to someone signing on at the megapark? Well, if I remember correctly, in one of the meetings, it said that if someone signs on at the megapark, it could be up and running within two years. That's what I believe they said, if I remember correctly. So this project is supposed to take ten years. Where are those people going to live while this is being built? That's one thing. I just, maybe it's a dumb question, but, you know, they're going to wait ten years to come here? I just don't know. But anyhow, the next thing I wanted to say was, number one, was please don't say no to rezone the property for Southside. We do not need the business side of this. You know, I don't know what to say except to repeat some of the stuff that I've said before. One thing is about the hotel. We don't want the hotel or need it and all the crime that comes with a hotel. And when I think of a childcare center, I think about the three that are within ten minutes of this property. One of them just opened, and the other two have been open for years. So what happens to them with such a massive-sized childcare center? And then the other one is a senior living center. I would hate to think that I would be a senior in a senior living center that far away from a hospital. That's just something I think about. And if you refuse to protect us from the amount of people and houses in this area, please protect us from the businesses, if it's anything that you can do from keeping that from coming. And, you know, I want to say again, I think, I know it's late, and I know y'all are tired. Thank y'all for being here, especially for the three that voted no. You will never know what that means to us. It really means a lot. But, you know, a local Realtor even was heard saying at a meeting that this was a good plan but a wrong place. And, you know, a legacy vote sounds great, but if this fails, people are going to remember you for that, too. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
Michael Kendrick.
Michael Kendrick, Tunstall District. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. You know, the lady that had her statement read, said it all. Said it all. She's lived through this. She's lived through this. She's experienced this. I haven't experienced it, but it sounds like we will experience it. Good, bad, and ugly. Clint Eastwood movie, huh? I can't tell you how many people, I didn't know we had so many transplants in this county, but I can't tell you how many people I have talked to that moved here to get away from this type of development, moved from other areas that they didn't want to live in them, they didn't want to live around them, and they come to good old Pennsylvania County to escape them. And here we are. This is the direction we're going. You know, I live about three miles from this, if you go from the back roads. There are going to be all kinds of negative spillover effects from this development. You know, like we say, you know, build some houses. Build some, develop twelve hundred houses. That's a good development. I would be tickled to death to see a development like that. But not a development like this, when you pack people in the way they're going to pack them in. It's going to look pretty at first, okay? But that prettiness is going to dull very quickly. Fifteen years from now, twenty years from now, when you have that many people packed in together, it's not going to be good. It's not going to be a good development. There's going to be all kinds of problems that come out of a high-density development when it ages, when it ages. So I ask you, I plead with you, please reconsider the high-density development as it is now. You know, let's shrink it down some. Medium density, low density, you know, anything can be better than the high density. We already have shortages everywhere, everywhere. Law enforcement, fire and rescue volunteers, school teachers, bus drivers, not just here, all over the country. What makes us think it's going to get any better with a high-density housing development? It's not. It's going to get worse. You know, high-density housing, you're going to put it down? We're going to put this in the country? Well, guess what? You're not going to have country anymore. You're not going to have country anymore because it's going to spread like a cancer. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Maybe she's left. Michelle Carter. Okay, thank you. Thomas Murphy. Elena Kiskaden. Okay.
Welcome, sir.
David Willis again, Tunstall District. Michelle Carter wanted everyone to know that the people that bought the Southside investing, they pretty much robbed Max Kendall. They got two hundred and thirty-nine acres from him that goes with that lot, with that land that they're putting it on. And the land should have been four thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars per acre. It should have come up to one point one, one million, three hun, oh, one million, one hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, which is one point two million, and they gave him five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. They gave him half of what he should have gotten for that land because he's over ninety years old. And this was really bothers me. I'm tired of all these lies and deception and everything. And, like I said, those people took that land from Max Kendall, gave him half the price. And one thing I'm getting tired of, and other people, like Mr. Wood said, people come and trying to buy his land. And I read on Facebook where I know somebody else come try to buy Tina Wood's parents' land from Hong Kong, and somebody else trying to buy up some other land from somebody else from Hong Kong. And people are outside of this country and outside of this county, looking, watching, and waiting for us to, y'all to change these codes so they can come in here and buy up our land and put cities and stuff on our land. And this is a ten-year project they're talking about, and so was that casino in Danville. And they're talking about building the homes first and then building the city. And by the time they build these homes, it only takes, it only took two years for them to get that casino approved in Danville. And that's all it takes for them to get the casino approved for Pennsylvania County, too. And by the time they build those two thousand homes, the casino deal will be done, and everybody will be building cities all over this county and putting casinos on them. And casinos will be listed under similar after hotels, retail stores, and hotels, and similar, similar will be the casinos. And two years after they change that, that's what I believe, and it's all going right along with it. Everything's a ten-year project, just like that thing in our Danville. And one thing I want to say about the lies and stuff and the deceit, and Mr. Ingram, he owns, Mr. Ingram, Alan Casper, the owner of Danville, the owner of Pennsylvania County Government Page, Alan Casper.
Sir, don't be, sir, direct the whole board. It's a body. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Casper that runs the Pennsylvania County Government Page said that Mr. Ingram, he met Mr. Ingram as a child, and he looked up to Mr. Ingram the whole time he grew up. And Mr. Ingram is God to him, more or less. So anybody that posts anything on Mr. Ingram's Pennsylvania Government Page that's listed as Pennsylvania County Government Page, you are not allowed to say anything about Vic Ingram on that page. And Mr. Scares has brought to light lots, lots of lies and posted on his page. They got Alan Casper on the Pennsylvania County Page.
Rest of the board, sir.
Okay, we got Alan Casper on the Pennsylvania County Page and Mike Swanson in the paper all for Vic Ingram. Vic Ingram pretty much owns this whole county. He owns the Pennsylvania, he owns that page and the newspaper. And he's got these other people come up here and speak good for this thing, and that's the only people that have spoken good for this thing.
Your time is expiring. Then wind it down.
Everybody else in here wants this not to pass. The only one wants it passed, Vic Ingram and the other people, the outsiders. And we're here today to see where the allegiance is, whether it's with these people or whether it's with Vic Ingram. We'll say who does, but...
Thank you, sir.
Kelly Wheeler. No.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman, Mr. Jones, and to the council, our board of supervisors and the officials. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak. As part of addressing the necessity to plan for growth in Pennsylvania County, it is necessary to promote strategic planning for future development to meet the needs of the people that live, work, and play here in Pennsylvania County. It is also important not to ignore or not adhere to the concerns and the consensus of the citizens that live, pay taxes, and have invested in the well-being of the county. The members of the board have been elected to address and utilize to the best of their ability and render sound decisions for the betterment of the citizens of Pennsylvania County and the county. The project that has brought the issue of amending the ordinance into question is of grave concern to the citizens in Axton, Brazos, Cascade, and surrounding areas. In my observation of the comments and consensus of the individuals that have expressed themselves concerning this matter, they are not against housing development, but they are not in favor nor in support of the changes and the magnitude of this enormous multi-level complex or subdivisional development that is not conducive to the region and will have an adverse impact on the community if allowed to proceed as is being requested. Increased population to four thousand, major impact on traffic requiring major highway upgrades, the impact on school systems to accommodate the level of growth, the need of public safety services or expanding public safety services are just a few of the concerns and potential ramifications that change will bring about. One key item that all of Pennsylvania County must realize is the Berry Hill Industrial Park, where we may and will be a vital part of the future tax base in Pennsylvania County. The industrial and commercial sector are major players in maintaining the infrastructure and keeping taxes and a sustainable level for the residential community. Housing and other components are essential elements in keeping Pennsylvania County moving on a solid foundation financially as well as economically for the future. Before amending the current ordinance, please take a real hard look at what impact it will have on the citizens in Pennsylvania County. Reassessment of the plans for this project should be reviewed for reduction and reevaluation before a final decision is made. And one little comment I'll make, and this is an old saying, is no need in putting or trying to put the cows back in the pasture after you towed the fence down. Thank you.
Ervin Moss? Okay. Josh Austin?
I reckon y'all know who I am by now.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Thank y'all again for giving us the opportunity to come up and speak, listening, not just hearing, listening. It's obvious that some of you listened. I wanna address a couple of things that are in the proffers that has been offered by the developers as part of rezoning, one of which is the traffic study. Correct me if I'm wrong, but when the Lawrence property was pulled out, that had to, they had to redo their scoping process. Scoping process has got, has a 45-day period for the state of Virginia to approve it. Then they have another six to 12 months possibly to, um, to collect the data. Why are we pushing this thing through so fast? We have no clue what's gonna affect them. And I see eyes being cut over there. So, let's collect a little bit more data before we continue to push, 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 push. Number four, while we appreciate the two acres that they have offered for the fire and EMS, I think we need to think about that as a county. I don't know of any fire department in the county that's got two acres for a station. And then you're gonna put EMS and the fire department in to two acres? I don't think it'll cover it. Along with apparatus, y'all have approved codes tonight to build houses continuously closer, closer, closer. Now we're gonna build up. You know where the closest piece of apparatus that can fight a multi-level structure fire is? Blairs. You know what's gonna happen to those multi-level structures by the time Blairs gets there with a ladder truck? Surrounded, drowned. The applicant, um, one thing I do want clarification on as far as the setbacks go is, where does the setback start and where does it end? Is it from the property line to the back of the structure? From the property line back to the, to the middle of the property? Where is that gonna end? I think that needs clarification. And the last but not least, um, I guess it would be 8C. There's a statement in here that says, "Notwithstanding the applicant's obligation to pay for all public water and sewer infrastructure necessitated by and serve the property, if infrastructure funds are available through federal or state sources, then the county agrees to cooperate with the applicant's request to obtain such funding from the project." Thought none of this was going on the back of the taxpayers. Where do grants come from? Taxpayers. Coming out, you get it out of Richmond, you get it out of Washington, regardless, it's taxpayer money. I know my time is up, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Lisa Hatcher?
Welcome in.
Thank you, face you haven't seen tonight. I'm Lisa Hatcher from the Tunstall District. Um, I live about four miles from the project on the other end of Martin. As I've listened tonight, I've made a lot of notes, changed what I wanted to say. I do wanna say first, to the developers, y'all have been kind, you have listened, thank you. It's not personal. You're guys, you're nice guys. I like them. But the citizens have also made concessions. I think the thing that I am the most upset about, listening in this room tonight, housing. That is all anybody has said, from the podium to the crowd, housing. Why are we having such a hard time getting across to you guys? Housing is not what we're against. We're against the commercial aspect. We don't want a Kohl's. I've spoke to the realtors, the developers. I'm told national chains would be brought in. Yes, there would be some local stuff too, but that would be part of it. I've never seen a Kohl's, right, okay, we got Dollar Generals everywhere, everybody knows that. We don't have a Kohl's just riding down the road in the country, bam, there's a Kohl's. That's a city. You can say this is not a city if you want to, but the things that you're trying to bring in, or that they're trying to bring in with this development outside of housing, which seems to be the most, the most used word here tonight is housing, the things that are being brought in doesn't have anything to do with housing. And the things that you want to bring in with this makes it a city. We don't want that. But I've gotta say this, this is unrehearsed, I've made notes as I've been here tonight. We keep hearing, stop telling our children there's nothing here for them. I'm so sick of that, there's nothing here for them. I've talked to people that say, you know, well, the kids, you know, they don't want their parents' farms or their grandparents' farms. The man, the farmer said tonight, how many farmers are over 58? Over 58? It's, where do you think your food comes from? We gotta have food. I hear they're, they're, they're growing meat in test tubes. I don't know if that's true, but I've heard it. Is that what you wanna eat? It's not what I wanna eat. So as much as I understand housing is needed, we don't need the retail aspect. That is the part we want you to understand. Do we want 2,000 homes? No, we do not. But we do not want the retail aspect. I don't want a Kohl's or a Target up there. I don't need a Texas Steakhouse in this property. That is not residential anything. That does not belong, and God forbid a hotel. My time is almost up, I'm gonna say this, both sides of your mouths have been spoken out of tonight. I'm sorry, I'm tired, I'm very passionate, I'm trying not to be angry, but I am angry. You keep saying there's nothing here for our children. You read something tonight from somebody, all these people are coming in, but they have no ho, no homes, they need somewhere to live. Well, where are these people coming from? If there's nothing for our children here, why are these people here? Why do they need housing? Who are they? There's a lot, there's a lot for the people in this county. We do need doctors, we do need dentists, we need farmers, we need people to build homes. There's nothing wrong with construction, there's nothing wrong with people building houses and getting dirty, or farmers out there getting up hay. We need veterinarians, we need a large animal vet. I have to pay a minimum of $50 just to get a large animal vet to come across the county to mine. I know my time is up. I just, we don't need the commercial aspect, and that's what we were trying to get across to you guys tonight. Thank you for your no vote, thank you for your no vote, and th, thank you for your no vote.
John Cruz? John Cruz? Okay, Erica? I don't wanna ruin your last name. Thank you.
Welcome in.
Good evening, everybody. I am gonna give a way different perspective than everyone's given so far. If I should do my best to hide it, but if you haven't noticed, I might have a little bit of an accent. I have been a Pennsylvania County resident for six years. I came from New Jersey, and we lived on a horseshoe block with 88 homes, and we had an 80 by 100 lot, and when I moved, my taxes were $5,200 a year, but the people of that community fought against them putting in condos and townhouses around this very quiet street, and they lost. And the school system went into the absolute garbage. Um, the drugs, the crime in the area were horrific. Every, you know, on a Saturday night, you'd see the cop cars all over the place, and due to the increasing property taxes and concern for my children, the Lord laid it on my heart to seek to go somewhere else. And the Lord laid us in Pennsylvania County, and we fell in love with property on Heinzville Road, and our in-laws live next door to us. And I did my homework, I knew I wanted my kids to go to Tunstall, cuz it was the best school system in the county. Um, no offense to anybody else, but I still believe that. And since that time, we have had several other Yankees purchase property in the area too, but I'm gonna tell you something, you know, the first thing that I do when I'm interested in a piece of property? I check the zoning, and I see, huh, well, we might put a single wide here, we might put a double wide here, might put a modular here, what's the zoning say? And if I wanna put a single wide there, I'm gonna make sure it says it's a 1. I'm not gonna come to the area and ask you to change to accommodate my Yankee ways. When in Rome, you do as the Romans do. And I love my county life. I love that I can go to Rural King and buy a gun in an hour. I love that I walk into Tunstall High School and I hear Christian music overhead, because you know what? You'd never hear any of that in New Jersey. So, don't, don't allow others to come in and change our way of life. If they don't like the way that life is here, they don't need to come here. And I say that as a born and bred New, uh, New Jersey girl. So, don't allow, don't change our, the A1 zoning to accommodate outsiders who do not care about our way of life, about our school district, about our pretty trees and rolling hills and all that we have here. I really appreciate your time tonight, and just.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
That all, thank you. At 11:07, I closed the public hearing. Mr. Ingram?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
The pleasure is yours, sir.
Yes, sir. In case R23-016, I make a motion approving the amendment of the future land use destination from agricultural and rural residential to medium to high-density residential and a rezoning of 579.72 acres from A1 Agricultural District to RPD Residential Plan Unit Development District to allow a mixed-use development that will consist of single-family and multifamily residential and commercial uses as shown on the submitted concept plan with the proffers submitted by the petitioner.
I get a second?
Second motion.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Second by Mr. Tucker. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I had some comments, if I may, but I.
Yes, sir.
I yield to my fellow board members.
Anyone else got comments? Yes, sir.
I'd like to make just a couple of comments. I wanna thank all the citizens for coming out tonight and, um, for voicing their opinions. I think Mr. Tucker said it well earlier, it's democracy at work. I also wanna thank the company. I know they attended several meetings you all had, they contacted each and every board member and had discussions with them. I know, uh, I talked with them on several different occasions, and they were always very willing to listen and very flexible, and, uh, I appreciated that very much in, in trying to work with the county and with the citizens. Also would be remiss if I didn't thank, uh, my colleague, Mr. Scares, says he has always pushed to listen to the citizens of the county, and I think he, uh, he did that, and I think we've all learned something from him. There's, uh, been one disturbing thing about this that, that did set me back and bother me a little bit, and I shared this with the company, and I don't think they had any part in, in this, but I did share it with them. It was also echoed with the RV Palace, and that was, uh, from citizens that said they were told that this was a done deal, that their opinions and whatever they wanted to say and all didn't matter. Well, you know, it's proof that it does matter. Did you get everything you wanted tonight? No. But the changes in setbacks and the changes in, uh, 25 acres instead of five really will help control RPD. I mean, you heard tonight that of the five RPDs that are already in the county, that 80% of those would be eliminated under the changes that we're suggesting that will be approved next month. So, I mean, the citizens were heard, we're making changes. Is it, we never know if it's gonna be perfect, we just try to do the best job we can, and I do appreciate each and every one of you, and appreciate the company for listening, and, um, I appreciate my colleagues for sharing. We've had probably more conversations the last 60 to 70 days in communicating and talking one, with one another, uh, to try to get to the best solution possible on this as, as I've seen in a long time, and I, I did appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Any more comments? Mr. Scares?
With the, uh, without trying to be politically grandstanding or anything, I just wanna tell Erica, I appreciate your comments. I was stationed in New Jersey for four years at Maguire, and Jersey girls are the best. I brought one out of New Jersey, she lives with me here, so, thank you for your comments. And again, thank everyone for showing up, and I appreciate, uh, the way this group came together to fight this. I also, again, appreciate what the developers have done, they, they came to the table and brought a lot of concessions, and that was all because of what you guys, the citizens of Axton, have done. So I appreciate, uh, everything you guys did, thank you.
Any more comments, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, I had a few in closing, please. There has been a lot of misleading, false information that's been shared, and you heard some of it tonight, and I wanna go down a list of 12 items just to clear the air, because I feel like you need to hear this. First of all, I'm not an investor. I have no financial interest in this project, nor does my family or any of my friends, so that accusation is a bare-faced lie. My interest with this is based on my love for this county, because I worked for it for 30 years. I retired for nine and came back in as a supervisor, and these four years have been a whole lot longer than the 30. This development will not be named after me, I promise you that. It is not government-subsidized. These gentlemen purchased that land, that it set dormant for 30 years. Any one of you could've bought it, but I drove up down 58 more times than I care to count and looked at that sign for sale, and finally, one day, it came up for sale, and these local guys bought it. And to hear people villainize these, these guys is pretty sad. President Biden will not ship busloads of illegal immigrants and drop them off. That's been said. It is not a 15-minute city. If you go and look it up, a 15-minute. If you go and look it up, a 15-minute city is truly a residential area that is surrounded by workplace as well as retail outlets, whether it be clothing, shopping centers, grocery stores, et cetera. But the biggest part that you keep living out is that the reason it's called a 15-minute city is because you can leave your home and walk or ride a bicycle to your job or to go to the grocery store. Now, I don't know about you, but I don't walk or ride a bicycle like I should, but that's quite a stretch. And that is a key component, is that you have to be able to do all of these things within a 15-minute walk or ride. Any commercial component that is built has to come up before this, the special use, well, it has to be vetted. And special use permits have to be obtained for that. So, you'll have your opportunity to come and say, hey, I don't want that grocery store. I don't want that Kohl's. You'll have that opportunity. But it will be, whatever is built will be open to the public. So, if my wife has to go grocery shopping, I'd rather her go up there to Publix or Foodline or whatever than go to the hallowed ground called Walmart, or go to the city of Danville, or Eden, or Martinsville, which many of you do now. I can't fathom why you'd want to spend your money in another locality rather than keeping it here. Changing this ordinance does not mean that these 15-minute cities are going to crop up and pop up all over the county. As you've heard tonight, there's only been five projects in the history of this county. And Emily found two. She told me three and then found two more. But how many people do you know that have the assets or the money to purchase land to build a project? It's just false. They're not going to pop up everywhere. And with what Mr. Warren has put out here tonight, it will drastically inhibit any future project such as this. It is not, in no way, connected with Caesar's Casino. In the beginning, many people tried to say, well, it's being built because of Caesar's. It's all of that dirty money. That is not true. It will not be built overnight. It is a 10-year build-out. Before they can even move the first shovel of dirt, all of these things that you've expressed your worries about have to take place in the, between the permitting process. But the big one is a traffic impact analysis that will be vetted by the VDOC, by their traffic safety team. And they're going to come back and say, listen, this is the way this has got to be. And do understand, whether we're talking about water sewer or the traffic impact analysis, which is a pretty expensive process, these developers have to pay for it. And so, I heard, well, what's your rush? Well, time is of the essence, because we could land a project any year, it could be built in two years. It's going to take these guys equally as long, if not longer, to start building houses. Are 1,939 homes going to pop up, or over 2,000, as some of you have said, overnight? No. These guys, I guess supply and demand might be a better way of saying it, they're going to build houses, and as they sell them, they'll build more. But another thing came to mind. When I was in the Air Force and I was stationed at Langley, I lived in Newport News for a while, and I lived in a townhouse. And if you know anything about a townhouse, right through this wall are your neighbors. And so, you have to be good neighbors. And that is one thing that I think we all have to try to work at doing a better job of. But it's how I chose to live and how these people would choose to live. And I respect that. It will not affect the rural or agricultural appearance of our county. Now, please think about this. I was raised on a tobacco farm. Would you rather have X amount of people on this dormant vacant piece of land that was stripped of all its timber, by the way, so the environmental side, the wildlife side does not exist? You've probably never walked it or rode it, and so I would encourage you to maybe look. But I have. And it's ideal to build houses, because the trees are gone. Now, you can't see it from 58 because of that frontside buffer, but you have to get on the other side of the trees. And it's a beautiful lake that will be able to be seen from 58. But what about this? Would you rather have X amount of people in this development or people going out here buying 5, 10, 15 acres of land and then turn around and doing whatever with it or subdividing, which in essence would take up that rural agricultural aesthetics that you talk about? If I was a farmer, I think I would, I would give that a lot of thought, to be honest with you. Your taxes will not automatically go up. I've heard that many, many times. You know, sadly, taxes is a part of life. That's how we pay our bills, that's how we provide government. But to say because of this, your taxes will go out the roof, that is not true. The lady that spoke of Northern Virginia, Loudoun County, I don't even like driving through there, to be honest with you. It's like comparing an apple to an orange. You know, what you've seen at Loudoun County is 30, 40, 50 years of growth. And I'll probably never live to see this project built out. You never know. And the, this is the last one, the development will not be annexed by the city of Danville. We are immune from any annexation process until the year 2035, I believe. 2035. So, that takes care of that. Let me close on a, on a brighter note. One thing that you fail to realize is landowner rights. What about these guys that spent their money, they bought this tract of land, and as I said earlier, by right, because they own it? They could get building permits and build 1,200 houses right now. Or, or they could, or they could have it rezoned to R1 and build 2,400, which could be a mix between single-wide trailers, double-wide, stick-built houses, whatever they wanted. Would you want that? Or would you like really nice houses, like what they're planning on building? So, again, think about that. But, you know, as has been said, I've listened to you, but you notice the same people keep coming up here saying pretty much the same thing. We have about 9,000 people in the Tunstall District, and I can tell you with a lot of confidence that the majority of the people are progressive, they want to see growth, they want things to be offered for their children, their grandchildren. So, yes, there is a housing crisis. There is a housing crisis. It's been said, it's been proven, all the way from Richmond to Danville. In the letter from Steve Healy, the CEO of SOVA, I don't believe I would question what he said, because he runs that hospital. If he says that he's got doctors that don't stay here because they don't have a place to live, or doctors that would love to live here but can't find a house, that leave, that put us in a bind, I believe I'd listen to him. This will, in fact, this, this land, this land has never been farmed. So, when I hear the agricultural connection there, it's never been farmed. It was owned by the Grant, it was, it was, it was owned by the Grant family, who owned the Danville Register and B. And it started out as a retreat. That's why it's the pretty rock buildings. And then it became a Girl Scout camp. And then, as the Girl Scouts sort of fell along the wayside, it was just land that they were paying taxes on, until the Axon Lodge came around. And I can tell you, I drove down the property line, you can't even see the Axon Lodge as it is right now, more or less with a 100-foot buffer. But they were very kind in doing that, because by offering that 100-foot buffer, they gave up their land that they could do something with. And having been raised on a tobacco farm, and this is a positive statement, farmers plant and grow right up to the public service road. And sometimes they get too close. And when they plow and they go out on the hardtop and they make a U-turn and come back, I can't tell you through the years how many cases I worked where people have torn up state-maintained highways trying to maximize their farmland. But these guys have offered up 100-foot setback, and that is very gracious. To provide the amenities of this development will mean less travel, less congestion. I mean, think about it. If they build a, particularly like a grocery store, I've lived out at 58 West for 33 years, and all I've ever heard is, we want a grocery store, until this came up. But it's just a few of you that don't want a grocery store, that want to go to, you know, some far-off locality. And that's up to you. And then, then you embrace, you embrace Dollar General. One thing that they mentioned that I hope and pray comes to be is an assisted living home, because just very recently, somebody had to put a loved one in a nursing home. And I'm not sure exactly which one, but where we live, if I, and I, my father was put in Roman, not Roman Eagle, Pine Forest. So, I can't tell you the number of times my wife rolled out to go over to Pine Forest Nursing Home to check on her father. Think about how wonderful it would be to have an assisted living in this area and about the people that would live nearby, maybe even in that project, that they wouldn't have to drive miles across country to check on the loved one. They would, they would be right there at it. It will, in time, bring additional revenue. Additional revenue is critical, because it keeps your taxes low. You mentioned childcare. Lisa Vance, she called me the other day, said, listen, if you know if these other daycare centers, if they need some referrals, I'll send them, because I'm full. And then with that, you've got the new one, Little Bird. And then with that, you have another one, Burton Lewis', which is not open yet. So, that's another real plus to me, that people can buy a nice house, they can come here and they can set up, just like the lady from New Jersey, and welcome. And, are you in New Jersey? Are those them guys in Jersey?
No. I'm in Eastmore.
Okay. Good to have you as well. But it's so many pluses to this, and the major driving force is the megapark. So, for us, and I'm talking about Mr. Tucker, even Scares, Darrell Alton, and Mr. Warren, we've all served on the RIFA board, which is a joint endeavor between the city and the county. We own the megapark, 3,500 acres. I've had people say, well, nothing will ever happen there. Well, you probably didn't hear about Hyundai, and then there was some rumor about Ford Motor Company. It's going to happen. It's not a question of if, but it's a question of when. And when that happens, the housing crisis that we already have will exponentially explode. So, having said that, I have four children, seven grandchildren, with the eighth on the way. And you may not believe this, but we do lose the future of this county, because they go off to college and they never come back. So, when I look at you and I listen to you, I know what you're talking about. I understand what you're saying, because the biggest thing here is change. You don't want change. But what I want to see changed is, I want our county to grow, and I want our children to stay here. Or I want them to go to college and come back and go to work for a major corporation located in a little place called Berry Hill. That's what, to me, this is all about. So, I knew when I got into politics, it was going to be nasty. And, and we've had those days, haven't we, gentlemen? But you know what? The collective heart of the board, as far as most of us, is what's absolutely best for this county. And that's why a project like this, that I haven't seen in my lifetime, is so critically important. And I'm very grateful that these guys bought that tract of land and that they want to invest their money on their property to do good for Pennsylvania County. And so, having said that, I do appreciate y'all coming. And it's been a long night, so I'm going to shut up. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Any more comments? Come anymore?
Ain't no way in the world I'm going to say anything. Hang on.
All right, gentlemen, we're ready to vote then. No more comments. One more vote.
Is it in there? There we go.
Motion passes, five to two. All right, moving on to item 11, unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business, Mr. Hunt?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. How about any new business, item 12?
No, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. Moving to item 13, matters from the work session. We got item 13A. I believe, Mr. Warren, do you have? Mr. Warren, do you have that, sir?
Mr. Tucker has that.
Oh, Mr. Tucker has, excuse me. Mr. Tucker?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Tucker. Sorry about that.
Our for motion to approve the Horseshoe Road waterline extension project for Saddle Road as presented in the work session.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tucker. All right, second.
Second. Yes, sir, second.
Second by Mr. Ingram. Any discussion on the motion? All right, gentlemen, we're ready to vote. All right, motion carries, seven. Board member reports. Ms. Eames, would you like to lead first? Do you have anything you'd like to say?
No, sir. Just keep remembering Tim Chasher.
All right. Thank you.
Students at schools.
All right, appreciate that. Thank you. Mr. Dudley?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank everybody for coming out. You know, this has been a long day. It's been some difficult things working through. I don't like the density of the project, and tried to make that clear, but I'm not against the project, and I made that clear. And just, you know, I've served on SR RIFA, San River Economic Development Board, and I enjoyed that, and I like to see economic development come. Housing is something we need, but, you know, it's late. But thank you all for coming. I do appreciate everybody that did show up. Thank you to the investors, to the attorney. Appreciate everything that everybody has done in this meeting tonight. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Mr. Warren, any comments?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. And I'm going to go ahead and apologize to the board and the other folks in attendance, because I know it's late, and I'd like to go home myself, but I've sat on this for several weeks, and I'm going to address it tonight. Last month, I made the comments that anyone that is a blogger or Facebook phenom that goes out there and uses non-factual information or tells lies or falsehoods, then whatever they say does not matter to me. And it doesn't. I'm going to be really clear about that. However, we had some folks that mischaracterized that, and I was upset last week, last month, because one, that blogger went out there and attacked a person that I don't have a relationship with, we're not good friends, really met her this year when she decided to run for commissioner of, I mean, clerk of court. And I have seen and been to many meetings that involved folks that were running for office. And I've seen this young lady stand up and speak on multiple occasions. I've had multiple conversations with her, and not one time have I heard this lady say anything negative nor derogatory about anyone running for this position or any other position. And I'm not going to mention the person's name. People keep asking me, who is you talking about? I'm not going to mention his name, and I'm not going to mention his little blog, because all that does is gives him some more people to go look at it. If you can't use your own name, first of all, you got to use a national name to get anybody to look at you? Then you got a problem to start with. Stand up on your own two feet. The next thing is, he made references to character and integrity, but yet he's sponsoring a person or endorsed a person that is running in the Banister District that has already been fined for using illegal... been fined for using illegal signs in his campaign. He's supporting folks that signed a pledge, and once it didn't go their way, decided not to honor the pledge. This same thing is going on right now with the Iowa caucus. You know what Trump said? "I'm not signing it." And that's all those individuals had to do. They could have still went for the endorsement, it involved the Republican Party endorsement, they just couldn't have voted that night. They didn't choose to do that. They signed the pledge, and when it didn't go their way, they want to take their ball and go home. I don't agree with that, and I don't support anybody that does support that. Also, it followed up, and I would challenge anybody that wants to know exactly what I said last month, to go listen to the meeting. But Ms. Arlene Creasy, who does Creasy Corner with our local paper, decided to come out and say that I said, "Little people didn't matter to me." I didn't say, "Little people don't matter to me." I said, "People that comment that don't tell the truth, then what they comment on don't matter to me." Now, as an individual person, as a Christian, I'd do anything I could for them. But I'm not going to sit back anymore and listen to falsehoods and negative rhetoric and not say anything. So if you're going to say it, you better bring the facts, because I'm going to bring the facts. They want to support special interest groups and all that stuff? I'm done with that, too. The special interest, I'm going to start putting the facts out there, and disclosing and exposing every bit of it. I'm tired of the lies and the rhetoric. Not only did Ms. Creasy feel necessary to attack me, as she's attacked many on this board, she also decided to go ahead, that wasn't enough. She did a letter to the editor disparaging and making false accusations on the same merits. She made the comment in her little opinion page, "Mr. Warren, if you don't like the heat in the kitchen, get out of the kitchen." I have never had a problem since I've been serving with a temperature in the kitchen. It don't matter to me whether it's hot or freezing. I'm going to stand up and be there. But what I don't like is pot stirs. And if that analogy fits you, then worry it. Because I'm tired of the pot stirring, and I'm going to call you out, and I'm going to tell the truth when it comes up. I know I might have offended somebody tonight, I've got friends that I might have offended tonight. That was not my intentions. There's a lot of people that I respect a great deal, that may have made decisions they wished they hadn't made and all that, and I understand that, because I've made decisions I wished I hadn't made. But I will challenge every citizen, as we go forward in this election year, because most of it's about local stuff, to do your own due diligence. Don't listen to these individuals that tell you, "You ought to support this," or "You ought to support that." Go out there and look at the character of the person running. Do your own background checks. Be sure they're sound financially. Be sure that, as much as you can, they pay their bills and they pay their taxes. Because they're going to be in charge of the finances of this county, and that's vital to you all taxpayers. So I'm sorry, and again, I apologize to my colleagues for going over tonight and saying this, but it had to be said. And again, I respect everybody, I respect your opinions and all, but if you're going to put falsehoods out on Facebook, then whatever you put out there don't matter to me. So don't worry about attacking me, it don't matter. Whatever you want to put in the Star Tribune in your opinion page, if it's not truthful, it don't matter to me. And stop attacking good people that don't deserve it. I want all of you to take the time to go check and see what the salary is for a board supervisor representative, and ask yourself if you would do this job for that minimal amount of compensation? It is nothing. And I'm getting ready to go off, and I can say that, and I don't care who ends up elected, I'm going to do everything I can to help that person that sits in every seat, because I know how tough it is to sit in this seat, and I'm going to be supportive of them after the election, because I believe in the process. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Mr. Scares, you got any comments after that?
Amen.
All right. Mr. Ingram?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. You know, what I'm most grateful for is this land in which we live, and the privilege that we have to agree to disagree. Now, some of you were sad, some were happy. But most importantly, this is government in action. It's been a long night, it's been a good night, but I thank you for your input, your involvement, and we'll make it, we'll be okay, because after all, we are one strong community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Mr. Tucker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good meeting, spirited meeting. Just consider this as you prepare to lay down tonight and enjoy your home, and also that nice, comfortable bed. Let's pray for the people of Maui and Hawaii that are going through one of the most horrific cataclysmic events, and I would imagine their history on that island. That being said, let me also do one thing, and the chairman is very, I guess, I would say he is very open and amenable to everyone expressing their opinion, so I get it, you don't want to offend anyone, you know, you let people run over a little bit, but there are rules in place as we have our public forum. So thank all of you all for coming out tonight to speak. But I have to do one thing, because I, I want to precaution everyone as you come to the meetings, and also, I challenge our chairman, is not to sit there and allow individuals to come to this meeting and attack board supervisor members directly. Now, I'm going to do one thing, and this is called taking the high road. I'm going to apologize on behalf of what you experienced with Mr. David Law, in terms of his attack, and also the diatribe that he was presenting. Now, I shudder to think that someone in that tone, that demeanor, would want to lecture me when they have a problem with veracity. One, I've never superimposed my opinions on anyone's since I've been on this board as a supervisor. Last time I checked, I also attend all types of committee meetings all over the county, and normally, I'm pretty tenuous in those meetings. I apologize that he felt that intimidated by me, that he would come and attack me personally. So, that being said, I will never, and hear me well, I will never capitulate in terms of representing the Banister District and the entire county, because that is my role and that is my responsibility. I will not re-litigate the statements made by Mr. Law or Ms. Burkhardt, because I think that was well documented in the Star Tribune, and also, you can take a look for yourself online. But it's very disturbing when I have members and constituents of my district call me up and say, "Who are they that they're talking about?" Whether it's minorities, or whether those that are physically challenged, and as anyone that's really followed these meetings, I have been pushing and trying to champion the cause of getting the entrance at that voter registration office more user-friendly in terms of those that are physically challenged. So again, I apologize to everyone that had to experience that type of vitriol from one of our appointed officials in the county. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Well, we've had a very, very long day. I made a comment earlier that this evening would probably be a midnight special. We only got fifteen minutes, and I'm going to hit it. So I'm not going to say a whole lot of it.
Thank you.
We're going to get breakfast.
It's been a long, but I want to thank everyone for coming out, for your comments, taking your time, the people from the district over there for the development, the developers. I want to thank our staff for the work that they do, and spending the night here with us, helping us get to this point. Also, remember our schools opened up last week, so make sure we get back on track and watch our kids, and be careful driving, stop when you see the buses and that kind of stuff. Again, thank everyone, and it's been a long day. Mr. Terrell, do you have any comments, sir?
I want to thank the Assistant County Administrator, Dave Arnold, and the IT staff, Oki Norcutt, and Josh Boyd, for the hard work to accommodate the hearing impaired tonight. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Mr. Hunt, you have any comments, sir?
No, sir. I've got to get out of here, I'm about to turn into a pumpkin.
All right, thank you. Meeting's adjourned.